We're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do I have a motion on the floor?
A motion to move citizen's statement and petition up in place of announcement and petition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. So we have amended our agenda because I know that there is a lot of people in the room that would like to make statements. So we're going to give you time to do that. First of all, thank you all for coming out. India, if you can go ahead and call the names.
Mayor, fellow council persons, my name is Leroy Bailey Jr. I live at 146 Orchard Road, West Hartford, Connecticut. I am the senior pastor of the First Cathedral, 1151 Blue Hills Avenue, Bloomfield. I have been pastoring the First Cathedral for forty-seven years. We have been living and domicile, that is, the cathedral in Bloomfield for eighteen years now. And over the years, we've had our difficulties. And I find this difficulty to be outstanding. And therefore, we're here tonight because of it. When we first moved over here, let me just preface this. Before moving over here, there was an article in the Hartford Current that raised the question by officials, why do African-American churches want to move from the north end of Hartford to Bloomfield? I found that a very, very negative and narrow kind of statement, and I couldn't understand why. We, as opposed to any other people, were to be different in terms of our finding a place here. We moved here because God signified it, and He told us to move here. When we first moved over here, we, one of the things we wanted to do was to put this sign in front of the church, a scrolling sign. We were told we shouldn't do that because it would cause accidents. And thereafter, we wanted to have school buses to commute our people from different parts of the cities. And they told us this would be a problem. So we had to fight our way through that. It seems as if since we have been here, there's been an ordeal. And then the former gentleman who was the assessor and other people with whom the members of our church in various leadership capacities, whenever we had a problem, we were able to talk about it. They would come to us, or we would be invited to come over here to talk to them and to resolve these situations. And now there seems to be a problem with us in terms of their wanting to tax the church. I've forgotten the figure. I think it was going from one hundred twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar assessment to six point seven eight million dollar assessment. Now, interestingly, I have my thoughts about this. I think that this is politically motivated. And some months ago, your former mayor came to see me. He, I'm talking about Sid Schuman, along with Catesa Kofield. And this had nothing to do with this, but it was leading up to this. He was talking about a business he was trying to do and wanted to get my advice about it. And I said to him, when he told me what he wanted to do, I said, "That's kind of passe. They did that about ten years ago, and that won't work. Furthermore, I would not be able to endorse that with my parishioners." Thereafter, the elections came up, and there were these new people, your mayor and my son, Rickford here, I call him my son, everybody in my church, I call them my sons and daughters. And they won the election, but I had nothing to do with it. And in the process of time before, after that, Sid called me. I returned his call, and he wanted to talk to me about what the church should be doing. As a matter of fact, he chided me, I thought. And I said to him, "You've forgotten how old I am. And I'm a man. And I'm a free man. And I serve a free people. And we are not in bondage. And we are not political ploys. And you don't have the right to do that." He sent me a letter. If you want to read the letter, I'll show it to you now. Here's the letter he sent me. After having sent me the letter, I called him back, returning his call. He wanted to see me. He came to my office. I thought we were on good terms. Following our meeting, we hugged, but I told him the same thing I told him on the phone, that he has no business threatening the church. And thereafter, Joe Suggs, he's here tonight, was at my church. He was running for office. I really didn't know until I saw a sign on the street, running against the young man who won the race. I didn't really know him. I had seen him before in the barber shop. But Joe was there. I didn't have an opportunity to introduce him. And I would have in terms of my sermon, before my sermon. And I told Suggs this, and I want you all to hear me. I said, "The governor has been here. And when the governor comes, I let him say good morning. I told Sid, when he came, I allowed him to say good morning. And any of these other people, if they want to say good morning, they can say good morning. But I would not allow them to give a political speech. He's there, our senator and our representative. They know I've done this throughout the history of the church, but I have not taken a political position. And the church hasn't. And I think that's why we're here now. And I think that they're using this to say to the church, "We don't want to have no uppity." And so I'm sick of it. I'm tired of it. And I think that they're using the assessor as a pawn to try to punish the church because of me. I'm a man. And these are men and women that I've pastored over the years. And I told Sid this. I preach about excellence. I preach to my people about development. I preach to them about growth. I preach to them about leadership. And that's my responsibility, and I do not apologize for it. And I've been doing it all of my life. And so I don't understand why, all of a sudden, you're upset with us because we have a cafeteria, we cater to our people and to whoever want to eat. You know, an old man told me this one day. Please listen to me. He said, "You don't have to talk about another man's biscuit. All you have to do is make a better one." Now, I could tell my people, I have thousands of people, I can tell them tomorrow, don't buy anything from any restaurant in Bloomfield. And I don't have a problem telling them that. But I'm tired of being pushed around, and I'm tired of this church being manipulated. We have been good citizens. We've been fair. We've done everything you've asked us to do. And I don't see why, after all of these years, we have to come here tonight and suffer what I call an indignity. And you don't have to use this young man. He's a new man. I guess you're using him as a front to do what you want to do, whoever the politicians are who are pushing this thing. And now we have to go to court. I don't mind going to court for the right thing, but this is the wrong thing. And it makes no sense. And I love this community. I love the United States of America. And the sad thing, I talked to the legislators for the last two years. They've invited me to be their keynote speaker at the Capitol to talk to all of them about the destiny of this state. And I get tired of this. I pray for Bloomfield every day, that God would prosper this community because the Bible says so, because my people live in our churches here. And I don't understand why we have to be the pawn of this kind of thing. And so that's where my heart is. That's where my spirit is. And I want to thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
The Lord bless you.
Good evening. To the Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and to the various officers in their respective offices of leadership. My name, full name, is Michael David Bailey, and I live at 32 Winthrop Road in Windsor, Connecticut. I am the co-pastor at the First Cathedral, and I share leadership with His Excellency, Archbishop Leroy Bailey Jr. I would like to note the fact that I am a former citizen of Bloomfield. I've spent nearly half of my life in this town. Myself and my siblings were educated in Bloom, in the Bloomfield school system. And we had tremendous and passionate instructors who taught us about local government. I recall one of my teachers personally speaking to me and encouraging me, as well as the rest of the classroom, and she said this, "Right is right and wrong is wrong. Never pervert the definition of being right for wicked and unjust means." This was also emphasized by my family and my faith community. I was taught that to be silent in the face of injustice is immoral. In fact, it is a fracture to the bone of morality. So I'm here tonight to speak against the injustice that is attempted to be visited upon my church, the First Cathedral. You see, we, as a faith-based organization, have aimed to do what is right, even in the face of many critics. And it's quite disturbing and unsettling that a place I once called home and received the training of truth is now a place that has political adversaries and antagonists whose mission is to disrupt the work of the church. And it has come to my attention that certain assessments and fabricated reports have been conjured up. Therefore, I plead with the town manager, the tax assessor, and the town attorney to correct this problem. We conduct ourselves as a place that loves God and loves His people. We've helped many people in the town of Bloomfield. The members of the First Cathedral have labored in this community for over eighteen years in educating children, fighting poverty, feeding the hungry, clothing the naked, visiting the sick and incarcerated, serving the elderly, amongst many other things. And now we are being targeted. And it looks like to me, ever since I've been in my younger years, this church has always been a target in this community it has tried to help. The reality is that right needs to be right, and the unscrupulous actions against the First Cathedral needs to be addressed and corrected. In our religious philosophy, Jesus teaches us that if we confess our sins, then we can move on and become a more reliable and sustainable community of change. And here we are tonight, having to face what it seems to be another fight in these chambers from egregious abuses of power. Let me say it one more time so you can hear me. I know I'm a young man, but I mean it. Egregious abuses of power. And I dare say this to you, if you have a conscience, hear me clearly, if you have a conscience, don't abuse the people of God and those who have made Bloomfield become more of a promising and safe place to live. So hear me once more. Please, please, I call on you to make it your agenda to do what is right and to correct this problem. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, my name is Leroy Bailey III, from Seventh Tuller Circle in Simmsbury, Connecticut. I am here because I serve as the executive director of operations, executive pastor of the First Cathedral here in Bloomfield under the leadership of Archbishop Leroy Bailey and co-pastor Michael Bailey. I stay here tonight as someone who has been part of this community for over thirty years. I'm sure you will hear from not only myself but others in a disappointment concerning the attempt to tax the First Cathedral. The First Cathedral has been a part of this community for over eighteen years. It has in every effort functioned and abided by city, state, and federal laws. I am personally astonished by the officials of this town who have not correctly done their due diligence of attempting to properly do measures to establish reasonable grounds for taxation of the church. Their explanations are mind-blowing and is a mockery to our governing system. Our town manager, tax assessor, and town attorney need to fix these problems immediately. As a faith-based organization, we have a mandate. The church is a place of refuge, where individual member, non, or non-member can come, be helped, and grow into maturity in every respective area. How is it that these officials should think they have the right to dictate our biblical mandate through financial restraints? Helping people does not warrant taxation. At this moment, everything is at stake. We cannot, and we will not stand for this. By all means, we have no interest in political tug-of-ones. But we do have an interest in honoring God, being good citizens, obeying the laws, and being accountable to our higher power. Thank you for taking time to listen.
Good evening. I am Larley Alvaranga, and I live at 85 Mountain Avenue in Bloomfield. And I thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the town council. I am a member of the First Cathedral. I've been there since 1999, and my pastor is Archbishop Leroy Bailey Jr. And I, the reason I'm here is I want to voice my concern regarding the tax-exempt status of the church, particularly my church. And I believe churches should remain tax-exempt, and here are a few of my observations. Churches provide a service and a benefit to society. The church, as well as other charitable organizations and religious entities, minister to the needy, the marginalized, the poor, youth, children, adults, children, and their immediate community and surrounding areas. The church, our church, what we do is we bridge the gap by providing services and resources that are not being met by cities or towns due to the financial constraints and burdens of, especially the cities and towns in the state of Connecticut. So we bridge that gap. We, the church, were able to fulfill and provide for the needy currently without the burden of taxation. You know, there's a study, there's some research that has been introduced for a number of years. And the research has to do with an individual from the University of Pennsylvania, a non-religious individual, a researcher. And what he studies is what is the value of a congregation? What is the value that a congregation in a church brings to a community? And what this individual says is that, when you look at how the church comes along and provides for the needy, they help those individuals get off of drugs. They help marriages to be restored. They help individuals to find their self-worth, and they help to reduce crime. Things that the towns may not be able to fill in, but the churches come along and do that. And in the study this person, this research that's being done, he puts a dollar value on it. It's something that's on the internet, and he assesses that there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that a church contributes to the community in terms of being able to help and provide needs. You know, and then we have, there's a constant cry of the separation of church and state, right? Everyone says that. In terms of us being able to, we want to be able to worship freely. We want to be able to not have the government dictate or favor any religion over another, so the separation of church and state. You know, and with this cry, citizens, us, we want to be able to practice our faith. We want to continue to exercise our religious freedom. We want to continue to see the healthy separation between the church and the state. And you know, and it's interesting, the separation of church and state, but now there's a body of individuals that want to come along and now bring us together by interfering and taxing us. We want to continue that separation of church and state. We want to continue to live, work, play, and worship in our community, whether it's Windsor, Bloomfield, this is my community, in my community, without interference from the government, without being burdened with additional taxes. You know what? We want to continue to support you, our elected officials, as you make business decisions that encourage innovation and bring businesses into the community that will help us grow economically. And yes, assessing and taxing is something easy, but what we're looking for you all to do, as we did for the previous slate of individuals, we want you to come along and be innovative. Yeah, we partner with you, but bring in businesses that can help us grow financially, economically, jobs for our people, et cetera. Let us, the church, continue to contribute positively to our community and encourage our members, as Archbishop and Pastor Leroy and Dr. Michael were saying, we want to contribute to, we want to continue being good citizens of the community. There's a quote by Chief Justice John Marshall, and he quoted this in 1819. And he quotes, "The power to tax involves the power to destroy." End of quote. Finally, let us, the church, carry out our mandate that has been given to us by God without taxation. The result of that will be a continued positive influence in our communities through the services and resources we provide, in the continuation of us being good citizens and partnering with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brandon McGee, 43 Warren Street, Hartford, Connecticut. Also state representative and vice chairman for both finance, revenue, and bonding, and as well as vice chairman for the Black and Puerto Rican Legislative Caucus. Madam Chair, Deputy Mayor, distinguished colleagues, it's a pleasure to be here on the other side of the town line, hell, from Hartford and Windsor. And I am here to stand in support of my other pastor, Archbishop Leroy Bailey, and the First Cathedral family. As a member of the church in Hartford's north end, the Citadel of Love, where my pastor is Dr. Marshall Muntz, I understand the importance of our church. One of the major things that I tend to talk about are the significant gains of the civil rights movement and how it were won by people in that process. Against incredible odds and often at great risk, thousands of Negroes from the First Cathedral, activists in our modern day to discuss the power and the freedom of struggle and victories won, that not only touched the people similar to you in your chairs to discuss some of the realities that we're facing in our community, they were able to use their power to push beyond some of the challenges that they're faced with. As a vice chairman of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee, we see policies and ordinances similar to what we are discussing tonight in forms of taxes. And just to make it plain, how do we get more money on the backs of many of our nonprofit organizations? And that's been the conversation, not just in Connecticut, at our Supreme Court level, in many other communities throughout this country. But it is really hard to believe that we would have any successful social service agencies, because sometimes that's what the church is, a place where people go. But I want to shift from that. I want to talk policy. I want to talk about the importance of bad policy. But I also want to talk a little bit about, and I'm not going to be long, because I'm yielding my time to Senator McCrory and Representative Bobby Gibson. But it's important as elected officials, and I think your town manager, as well as your mayor, reassured us that this is a part of the process. But I'm concerned that we're moving too fast in this process and not allowing for the individuals to really have their say in my words in court. And so if I could leave anything with you, please know that the state of Connecticut at this very moment does not support the taxation of 501(c)(3) organizations. It is absolutely critical that many of our towns and our cities thrive and survive. So don't get me wrong, I understand taxation, I understand the importance of building our tax base, our grant list, et cetera. But when you talk about the hurt, you talk about the poor, you talk about individuals in our beautiful suburban towns that are suffering, do you know where they run to? The church. And so I'm not here to ruffle any feathers, but maybe I am. But I'm here to work alongside each and every one of you, to have this conversation on the state. I'm going to be standing next to this man as we walk through this process, as well as the leaders in this room. But this is important. And I also have a few questions for the assessor at the appropriate time, and I look forward to continued dialogue on this matter. But clearly, there's an issue. The people are here.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Did a fine job, y'all, man. Great job. I don't even have to say much. Mayor, deputy mayor, and council people. When I got the message that Archbishop Leroy Bailey was kind of upset, that concerned me. First, I'll bring you wishes and prayers from my pastor, Reverend Massey, Hope World Baptist Church, born and raised. When my brother Archbishop informed individuals that there was a problem in Bloomfield, I said, "I'll be there." I represent Hartford, North Hartford, Bloomfield, and Windsor now. I'm the state senator for this area, and most people know my reputation precedes me. I believe in justice, and I believe in righteousness, and also believe in policy. I'm here to tell you tonight that there is no law on the books in the state of Connecticut that allows for taxation on nonprofits. It doesn't exist. I was told there was a court case that took place in 2009, and that it started this process, but as of today, there is no law on the books that allows for that. And I'll tell you also, as long as I'm in office, there won't be a law on this book. I would say you are sliding down a very slippery slope. When you start going after churches, whether it's First Cathedral or any church in Bloomfield, you are setting a precedence that you don't want. Because today it's First Cathedral, tomorrow is your church, and then your daycare. Okay? So understand that. There's an opportunity, I believe, to work together. Archbishop said he has always worked in collaboration with his organization. But he feels, though, and I believe him, it might be some politics involved. And I'm here to tell you, if there's going to be some politics involved, I'm on his side. And while y'all are here, we ain't gonna lose. Because right is right. If we're gonna change something, let's change it at the state capitol, not changing in individual communities. Because Bloomfield is no different from Hartford, from Windsor, or any other community. The demographics might be a little different, but the people ought to say. The churches in Bloomfield serve the people all over this community, and all of them need help. So I'll say in closing, I'm there for you. And council, let's work together so that we don't have to anger that Archbishop. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Town Council. My name is Vanton Forbes, and I reside at 15 Harvest Lane in Bloomfield, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of support of my pastor and my church. I was a former employee of the church for over 10 years, and during that time, we've had several occasions when we've worked with the town. And I just, I'm just curious tonight, as far as what was the process, the internal process in determining what this assessment would be on the church? Because if you truly going to do an assessment, our Sister Lawley talked earlier about the value of a church, because I've seen it firsthand where our congregations in the community have given their time, their talents, and their treasure back into community, into Bloomfield. We have been in the school system as mentors. We have done health and wellness programs to provide services for the residents of Bloomfield. We have delivered backpacks, school supplies at your back-to-school program. We have delivered pampers and diapers, food supplies for your food pantry. But yet, you have decided to set, assess another tax on us. I believe we're living in the wicked, in the cruel times. Dr. King said, "You know that we're in a destructive time when we have guided missiles and misguided men." I think your thoughts and your process have been misguided, and I'm here tonight just to stand with my church to let you know we will not have this any longer. We cannot, because it's not just for the people that are here tonight, but it's for my children and children that will follow after us. If we allow you to do this to us, if we allow you to do this to us, what would you do to our children? We want to be heard, and we want to be heard loud and clearly, that we are a body of Christ. And I was thinking about this today, is that, you know, how can you tax something that doesn't belong to you? We are a church. We are a church for all people. I was inspired by a town council meeting that I viewed a few months ago, and they applaud the effort of the town mayor, that early in the process, she brought the council together, and you had a team-building effort. And many people in the council stated that it was a great retreat. Out of that retreat, you learn to value diversity, you learn to have appreciation for different points of view, you talked about respecting each other and trusting each other. But today, I wonder if you really value that as an organization, because that is not extended to the community. That respect, that value of diversity, I'm not seeing that in this action that you're taking. So I call on you today to do what's right, to do what's right for not just the church, but for all the residents of Bloomfield, our children, our elderly, our disabled. Because like Lawley said, we have been standing in the gap for the town. We have provided service for all your residents, not just for those who go to the First Cathedral, but everyone that comes into Bloomfield. Today, I was also thinking about it, I said, "You know what? If we add up everything that the church has done, should we send you a bill for that Because there's so much, so much that we do, but we don't do it for form or fashion to be shown, we do it behind the scenes because we value where we are. Like Archbishop said, when we moved here, we decided to be planted here. We talked on Sunday about the celebration, and this is why I'm talking about lack of respect. We're celebrating 47 years of leadership, and I know I've been away for some of the meetings that happened, but, you know, I was looking around on several occasions, and I didn't see people from the town to come to say thank you for the service that we, as a church, have provided to this community. My mom had told me a long time ago, all you have to do is just say thank you for someone that, when they do something good for you, just to say thank you for what we have done. So I believe, as a community, we need to stand together and to show our appreciation for the First Cathedral and our leadership for what they have done. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Town Council Members. My name is Cyrus Sutherland. I reside at Vine Street in Hartford, Connecticut. I'm a member of the First Cathedral Church. I'm not the smartest of guys. I learned a rule a long time ago about business, and one of the key factors to business is location, location, location. And what that states is that if you're going to establish a business, you want to be in a location where there's good traffic. Who are you kidding? First Cathedral is a magnet to your community. It draws commuters in here. As a commuter that comes into the town of Bloomfield, I'm going to patronize Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, Ruby Tuesdays, Stop &amp; Shop, I'll stop at your banks, I'll visit your barber shop, and I don't mind doing it. And it causes detriment to the community of Hartford. Some people there outraged that First Cathedral even decided to move here. All of these people, I mean, you figure there's 4,000 people that's visiting on any given Sunday, 4,000 times 52, oh, we got 208,000 people that are visiting. Go tell those businesses, when you make your decision to tax us, that 208,000 people will not be patronizing your restaurant, your Home Depot, your businesses. And it won't be because of a decision by Archbishop, but it makes financial sense that you're going to tax me, a visitor to your town, which is called highway robbery, you want to tax me for coming here for church service instead of letting me go to your merchants to give you a better tax income base? With that, I'm thrilled. Thank you.
My name is Royal Miles from 531 Park Avenue here in Bloomfield, Connecticut. I am not a member of the church, and I'm not here to support or destroy the church one way or the other. I'm here to talk about something which affect the church and affect everybody here in this audience and outside of here, and I'm talking about the insurance, that is business which is going through the old legislative statue in Hartford at this time. And it brings me to the point where the church, First Cathedral, earlier on played a very vital role, in my opinion. The very person that they are having this controversy over, which was the mayor at the time, is the shulman. I contacted him, and I wanted him to arrange a meeting, and I had to find a place, and I couldn't find any place, and I went to the First Cathedral, and they accommodated me. They didn't charge me any money, and it was a valuable service. Because what I was trying to do was for, not for myself alone, but for the entire community. Because I sympathize with these people who have their crumbling foundation thing, but I cannot agree with the way they're trying to finance it. They're trying to hold me responsible for something that I knows nothing about, because they want to put tax on my insurance to pay for it, and I said, "No, over my dead body." And I went to First Cathedral, and the girl said, "Well, you know, you have to, this is the rules," but she called up the pastor, and he said, "Yes, give it to him." Amen. Glory for that. And so tonight, I am here to remind you that, again, they're trying to go through the back door now to tax us for the insurance problem, which is not ours. I did not create this bogus building material. It was the state representative that failed us. They should have inspected the thing and know that it's not right, they wait and sit down there until it get out of control, and they're trying to go through the back door. And I let, let me tell you this, the insurance company is opposed to, but that is a trick. It is a racket. The insurance company wants us to let the pass the legislative, they don't want to accept responsibility, but once you put it into law, then they will not give up on that money, you can't fight them again, because they're going to say, "This is it, we didn't reach a legislative," and that's the reason why the insurance company is fighting, so that they will pass it as a law, and we are going to pay for the rest of our lives. Listen, if they were serious about it, they would have said, "Well, do some bonding." But they want us to pay the insurance. Listen, look at what is happening out in California. Every year, there's a disaster. And why? Because you and I are paying it, we are subsidizing it. You think the insurance company could continue to pay these billions of dollars over there for these fires? No, they wouldn't. They would have been broke, they would not be able to go to Liza and get any, Liza of London and get reinsurable, because we are paying for it. The entire country, that's the reason why it can continue. And that is what they're trying to do to trap us here. We must not allow it. And thank God for your church, so you was able to get me, because I was able to fight and block the first stage of it. They reconsidering the idea, and I want everybody here to call up the representative, thank God one was here since night. You have to go down there and fight, don't make this bill go through. They will not allow it to go through. And the next point I am wanting to make is that we know that we have Easter coming. We know the one man that speak the truth, he wasn't dealing with facts, he was dealing with the throat. And that is the reason why our constitution provides for separation of church and state. And I am not saying that, you know, if the city or the town or the state can find out, you know, where there's a breach in our tax system and the church is, well, you know, they need to be called up and re, but to look at one thriving business in the community and just to go after them in a malicious way is wrong. And I hope that we can work this thing out. I don't see we have to go to court over it. We make laws, laws they will make, man made laws. So, you know, I mean, I'm hoping that the mayor, the council, and we as citizens, after all, we own everybody here. Yeah, we own you guys who work for us, come on. And, you know, I'm hoping that we can sit down and work, work out our problems in an amicable way, the benefit of every one of us. Thank you, sir.
I will begin with this statement. It is presumptuous to talk of the interests of a community without understanding the interests of the individual. My name is Jacqueline Ortiz Miller. I sit, I stand before you today not only as a member of the First Cathedral, but also as an intern in a local community agency here in Bloomfield. This evening, I ask you to reconsider your proposal of taxing the First Cathedral, a church for all people, a pillar in this community, this state, and beyond. I am not here to be political, to discuss the First Amendment or the practice in this country of separating church and state. I am here this evening before you to discuss community and the vital role that church plays in bridging the various gaps within its community while addressing social determinants that allow for unequal access for many. As a public health advocate for social justice and equal access, I have found not only in my personal journey, but also in the journey of many communities and neighborhoods, the vital role that church plays in our lives that extends beyond the spiritual. I believe it was Coretta Scott King who once said, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." If it is one thing that I can testify to, is that the First Cathedral's roots in this community is one that begins with its mantra of love and compassion for all people, which extends beyond why we are here today. I want to share with you one community event that, as a public health advocate, is near and dear to me. Each year, the First Cathedral holds a health and wellness event, where they partner with many health and local community agencies that volunteer their time to provide preventative chronic disease education and screenings for members of the community. They provide education on diabetes, heart disease, asthma, prescription management, and health insurance enrollment for many. This is a free and open event to the community at large. For many receiving these services, they are uninsured, they have transportation barriers, linguistic barriers, and they are living on fixed incomes. This is vital when we look at the data in our state that constantly shows impoverished communities of color at higher risk of dying of many of these preventable diseases, because we, as community agencies, are not meeting their needs or meeting the community where they are. Collective impact and community is the foundation of what the First Cathedral does. I ask you this question. Who shall we, the individuals who make up this community, hold accountable? Who shall we, the individuals who make up this community, hold accountable? Should churches no longer be able to meet these needs that many local state agencies are unable to meet due to taxes and budget cuts? Please consider whether money is more important than your constituents or your community at large. I close with these words. For the love of money is the root of all evil. In other words, do not make this a money issue, but a social and human rights issue. Do not allow politics to minimize the work that not only the First Cathedral, but many other churches in, in and around Bloomfield are doing to bridge the gap within their communities. A gap that gets wider every hour, every day, every month, and each year. Please reconsider what you are planning or thinking of doing because it is a social injustice. Thank you.
First, we want to say to our mayor and to the deputy mayor, members of the council. We first, as the members of the Bethel Amy Church, my wife Jennifer is here, and also as the vice president of the Greater Hartford Interdenominational Ministry Alliance, we stand with the First Cathedral and all bodies of faith, churches, and 501(c)(3)'s to say that we do not agree with taxation on any level. The reality is that when most of our churches decided to move from Hartford to Bloomfield, we are considered gentrified. We're also considered elitist. And the reason why I use those words is simply because when we seek grant funding to fund our programs for our seniors, for our children, our nursery schools, when we seek grant funding for the different issues that we try to minister in the greater Bloomfield community, we are told that we will not meet the qualifications because of the location of our church. That because we live and because we work and serve in Bloomfield, we do not qualify for grant funding. And so our members off of the, off of our backs, the blood, sweat, and tears have struggled to keep our programs open. We continue on day-by-day basis through the tithes and offerings and sacrifice of our congregants, continue to do work in the community. And I remind you that you are the elected officials that have been elected by the people to serve this community. You have come into our sacred place to seek election. You have stood before us and asked for our vote and the support of our churches and our members and our families. And now for the church to be taxation or for our 501(c)(3)'s to be taxed is a disgrace before God. And it should not happen. The Bethel Amy Church, we have a 501(c)(3). We own a piece of property. And that property has been taxed by the city of Bloomfield for the last 12 years that we've owned it. We continue to struggle to pay for 17.5 acres of land in the town of Bloomfield. And we are a church. We are 501(c)(3) and we have been taxed for over 11 years. And we continue to pay that tax, whether we feel justly or not justly. And when as the pastor and as the president of the 501(c)(3), when I have asked the question to the town of, "Why are we taxed?", I received the response, "It was easier to maintain the taxation than to take it away." Whether that meant it happened under somebody else's watch or not, we still pay the tax. So I support the First Cathedral. I support Archbishop Bailey. I support all of our churches and we need to stand firm. The thing that I am questioning is how come many of our religious leaders were not informed of this meeting tonight? And we wonder, is this some trick or some, uh, quick, something that is being done to slide something in to our people? And I guarantee you that we will be back again. And this room will be packed, not just with the First Cathedral, but with Bethel Amy Church and all of the churches in our community and 501(c)(3). Because this is not the way that business should be done in our fair town. Thank you.
While Mr. Pruitt is coming in, and he is still here. I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank you for the passion in which you're speaking. I really just want to make it clear that this was not, um, a meeting that was held under the cover or by the cloak of night. I know that First Cathedral has an issue on the table and Archbishop wanted to bring his members to make sure that the, the, the meeting, um, that some issues were addressed. So there was no, um, deliberate act to exclude any of the houses of worship. So I just wanted to make that very, very clear. Is Mr.?
Good evening, everyone. This problem result from the state saying they broke. So they didn't give the towns more money, the money that they needed to really operate their, operate their towns the way they should have. So what are their towns doing? They're putting the money, the burden on the churches, the nonprofit organizations to try to make up that loophole. That's where this all come from. This is where it all started from. Okay? The state say they didn't have no money. Okay? So they didn't give the towns the money they were supposed to give the town. So now the towns are looking at ways to try to accommodate their budget and do the things that they want, how they want to do it. Okay? First of all, they need to know how to work their budget. Okay? And stop jumping on churches and other people in the community to try to make up their downfall. Okay? Because we are all struggling and we all pay taxes. Okay? The state of Connecticut, we can't even take the inches off our house that we pay. Taxes aren't only on the federal level, not on the state. Okay? So that's money that I can't get back, that I've already paid out. You know? That they changed the laws and if you don't look at them, you get caught up in them. Okay? My thing is that the towns are looking for ways to cover their cell, so they saying, "Who can we pick on? Who can we get the money from?" Okay? Who can we target it? Okay? So at this point, you're targeting my church and the other churches trying to get accommodation, what the state then gives you. We give to everybody. We feed everybody. Anybody come to our church, we have always given. We have always fed them. Okay? We paid their rent. Okay? We paid their oil bill. Okay? But let me give you example. I had two kids, a single parent. I could never go to CRT, a project concern, to get no oil money. They always told me I made too much money. Okay? So I had to struggle to pay my oil bill. Okay? To pay my light bill. I could never get anything. I could never go to the town and say, "I need help." They never helped me. Okay? But guess what? I could always go to my church. Okay? And they would pay my oil bill. They would pay my light bill. I only had the money. I'm letting you know now. Okay? So this issue started from the state level saying that they're broke, they didn't give the towns what they were supposed to get. Okay? So the towns are trying to find a way to get that money, to make up that money gap. And who they targeting? The churches, the middle class, people that's struggling. Okay? And everything is going up. Oil is going up, gas is going up. Okay? But our salaries are not going up. Okay? So we, and, and we still got to pay taxes. Okay? So my solution to this problem is find another way.
To the mayor, to the vice mayor, to all of the town council, I stand also with First Cathedral, as well as all of the other churches that serve the Bloomfield community. I've heard a lot of things about what we are shared and what we are doing. There are many volunteer services beyond just what they have spoken of that the church itself gives. We offer support to families in other ways through, through counseling. We offer support to families in times of sickness, when persons are in hospitals for long extended periods. We have to offer that support and not only support as far as what you would consider spiritual support, we have to offer financial support to help sustain those families during those difficult times. And for you to, again, come back to the church, and I've seen this before because I've been all over, uh, southern New England, all over Florida, serving and, uh, pastor the church in Florida where the local council tried to tax, uh, the local churches and they got spanked on the hands for it eventually. And I believe in, in return, uh, there will be some form of, uh, I don't want to say retaliation, but there will be some form of retribution that will come back because of trying to do, attempting to do something like this. Because although the church will continue to give its services to its constituents and to, to the community, there will be some services that you will ask for, that you will not be allowed to, to get. Because what you're doing, you're drawing a, a, a line in the sand. And you're saying, "It's us over here and the church over there." And I don't believe that's what you want to do. I think what you want us to do is to partner together, to see how we can work together to make, uh, whatever shortfalls are there work. And we are willing to come along with you. I know Archbishop Bailey, all of the other persons that have spoken today, other pastors, we're willing to find ways to see what we can do to help your programs, to help you sustain them. But to come and tax us to try to get that money, it's gonna be difficult. It's gonna be difficult. Uh, it's gonna be challenging. And I think some of our churches have already begun to look at ways of how we're going to address this issue with you. And for, for, for one thing, you're gonna be, you're gonna spend a lot of time. You're gonna spend, you're gonna spend a lot of money, uh, to deal with us because we, we, we're not gonna just sit back and just let it happen and just say we're gonna write the check. Because those checks come off the back of people not only in this generation, but generations past that have given themselves, by selling dinners and pies and what have you, to get us to where we are. And when you see elephants like First Cathedral that's serving the community, those churches, it costs money to sustain those buildings. And, and you must understand, for you to take money from them when they're already, find, all of us are finding it challenging just to pay heating bills, just to pay electric bills, just to sustain the programs of the church, uh, it's, it's, it's unconscionable. So I ask you to rethink this and to reconsider it in a way where you can come to us and maybe sit down with us in a, maybe town meeting and say, "Pastors, can we come together and talk about this? Can we see what we can do to partner together?" I'm willing to come to that meeting. I'm willing to bring some of my councilmen to that meeting and see what we can do with our finances to try to help you as a, as a, as a town, but to come and try to take it from us through the back door, it's not gonna work.
Good evening. And the mayor and deputy mayor. My name is Richard Griffiths. I reside at 45 Hornbrook Drive in Tallent. And I am a member of the First Cathedral. I have been a member there for about 24 years. And I serve as a chairman of our deacons. In that capacity, we're just, we, we see a lot more of what goes on with the church is a part of, um, and just in that role. And I think you've heard it all before, heard it all by people who've come before me and, and they've shared just how much of an impact we've had. And I probably don't need to share with everyone just how much of an impact that this church has had in this community. You've heard it all, um, just the, the services that we, we perform, the, just the good that we bring to this area. Uh, so I won't go through that. But I, and I admit, I don't fully understand what are whys of what we're doing and the taxing. I just know that when I hear tax, taxing and the 501(c)(3)'s and churches, it's, it doesn't seem to add up to me. And, um, I've heard before as well that it's a pretty slippery road when I start hearing taxes and churches in the same sentence. And so I just want to urge you just to, to really consider what I hear is on the table. And, and I think we've all seen and heard on national level, some of the things that are happening there, some of the discord and, and discourse. And I, I don't think we want any of that here. And I think we want to stay as far away from that as possible. But I know that in the end, the right thing will be done. I have no, no concerns. I do have concerns, but I have no doubt in my mind that the right thing will happen here. We're just praying that y'all will be part of the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow councilpersons, town manager, and town officials. My name is Joseph Dakers. I reside at 4 Pine Cone Road in Ellington, Connecticut. I've been a member of the First Cathedral for about 16 years, my wife and my children. To say that it is a church that produces excellence would be an understatement. I love the church. I heard someone say to me that, "Well, I've been in government for 40 years." And someone told me that, that I was right in the middle of something. Well, I'm not in the middle of anything. I'm on God's side. That's, that's whose side I'm on. And I have no compunction about bringing that to your attention. I'm in a capacity as a trustee of the church and a deacon. So I'm fully acquainted with a lot of the operations of the church. Some of them, not, not so much, but most of them, yes. Someone cited utility bills a while ago. You know, these things that we're bringing up here now is a charade. It's a waste of time. The people that you see in this audience here, they pay 10% of their income to tithes. 10% of their income on a weekly basis. So if you looked at our preliminary document, to see that number on there, you'd say we were rolling in money. It didn't come from these things that they're talking about, about catering and, uh, you know, we have a play that's coming up now. We're giving away more tickets than we're taking money on. And most of the people are volunteering out of that stuff. Those are church-related activities. They are part of the ministry. You've heard many of the people talk about a number of different things that we do here. It's part of the ministry. I mean, I know state agencies, for example, the Department of Children and Family Services, they hire nonprofit programs to administer some of their services because they can't afford it. But the church hasn't asked you for anything. They do it theirself. They're paying these people's bills. In some case, they pay mortgages. Now, I'm acutely aware of the statutes. I've been in this business for 40 years. Okay? But I'm here in the capacity of church. I think this action was unilaterally draconian and I think it could have been done more surgically. All right? And I'm not farting the administration. And I, I side with my brother, uh, Richard, that there has to be a resolve. My concern is, hopefully the town hasn't set their budget yet. Because if you set your budget, now your budget is inflated and you, and you're digging your heels in the ground. You've hired special counsel, which is a combative position when this could be easily resolved. resolved. The pastor's salary doesn't have anything to do with this. You have a cell tower and that steeple there that you're aware of already. You have all the documents. The permits for the daycare center and the credit union have been taken out, as I understand it. So in this business, once a building permit is taken out, the related departments get a copy of that building permit, and that spurs them into action. So what do you do? You go out and you look to see what the influence on the property is of the work that was done. I don't know if that was done here. From my understanding, and in fairness to the administration, they indicated that they tried to communicate, but they never got anything back, I would have been a little less heavy-handed. I would have got my car and drove over there to try to talk to somebody, because this is a church. And I know how the church survives. Now, if you look at our expenses, at the end of the day, we're flat. There is no income. All of our money goes out. This money about, this business about the food, the cafeteria, we have monthly meetings there. Members of the church have meetings there, and as a service, because we come in there so early, they provide food for us. We pay for it, we give them a stipend. Christ almighty, if you were to go out to one of these restaurants here, you pay 15 to 20 dollars for it. People are giving four and five dollars. This is ridiculous. It's absurd. And I think there's a way out. Now, I know a little bit about this. Now, you have that cell tower and the predecessor to the, one of the predecessors to the current assessor has an assessment on that property. And they pay the taxes on there. No problem. It was, nothing was done clandestinely. Now, we have the daycare, here again, building permits. You're aware of it. We're not doing it clandestinely. We have a credit union in there now. We have a lease, and the lesssee is responsible for the property taxes. Take the lease revenue, capitalize it, and come up with a value for that segment of the church. No problem. But this global thing of the whole church is exempt, and this other mystery stuff, apparently you don't understand how the churches work. I don't know about the synagogues, but I could talk about my church. We pay 10% of our income every week. Not our net income, our gross income. That's what made that building responsible, because of our faith in God. And so what somebody might say, "Well, I can't believe you do that." Listen, I know some of you know the story of Abraham and Sodom and Gomorrah, and how Abraham negotiated with God for the lives of these people. If one person comes to that play and they give their life to Christ, it was worth it. There is no cost there. Because that person now becomes a productive citizen of the community. My thing is, again, it's a simple process. You take that income, you capitalize it to a value, you got the assessment on that property. Now, this business about, you know, we want to know about everybody's salaries, that doesn't come into it. I'm just telling you, I know better than that. You need the income of the play. We got the leases, we give you the leases. This other stuff is foolishness, trust me. And I side with some of my sisters and brothers here on some of their comments, so I'm not going to belabor it anymore. I'm just appealing to your pragmatic side about how to go about resolving this issue with all this other stuff. It just, it's just, it's going left. And I remember a judge told me one day in a judge's chambers, and we were going through some negotiations, and he says, "A pig gets fat, but hogs get slaughtered." This is not going to work out well, because it's going to be long drawn out. So I just want to thank you very much, each and every one of you for your time. I know you're doing your job, but I would ask you to exercise some jurisprudence on this matter. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Assistant Mayor, and all the council. I'm here as a member of First Cathedral and as I was standing over there, I believe that there's some things, because I'm...
Pulling the mic down?
Okay, sorry. As I was standing over there, I believe that there's some things that came to my heart that really, that y'all need to know. That, one, the church is called out of a community. It's not just an entity all by itself. It's for the people, by the people, and this is scripture-based. And First Cathedral is not Pastor Bailey's church, Archbishop Bailey Church is our church. And the people that's of this church is in the community, and not only is it the community, it's family. These people are already paying taxes, already being noted on the federal and even in the towns that they live in. They're paying taxes. So our church is being taxed by the people, paying taxes by the people that's there. And also, I would like to say that our church, I like personally, I like because what it stands for, it stands for loving God, loving people, sharing Christ, and making disciples. And then when I, when I am that and in itself, it's also made up of that which the Lord God said that true religion is. True religion is helping orphans, helping widows, meaning helping families, the communities, and the people that can't help themselves. So therefore, this church is being, not only as I heard, it's a pillar, it is also being and putting taxes, our taxes, that we're paying to good use. And therefore, that's all that I needed to say, that our taxes, our taxes is working for us, not only in the government, but it's working in the community as being families that's brought together. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Freddie Graves. I live at 18 Florence Street, Hartford, Connecticut. I was in the military for six years. I carried a gun. Now I carry a Bible because I go to First Cathedral. And I am also the Vice President of Mothers United Against Violence, an organization that nobody wants to be a part of. But if you start taxing the church, then that's also is going to be taxing our organization. So I think that the separation between state and church should stay the way it is, because a few years ago, some congressmen, they went after the ministers for, on television, they didn't get anywhere. So now we want to start locally to go globally. It didn't work globally, so it ain't going to come here locally. And to, and I am from Alabama, and we always had to fight. And we ain't going to stop now. And I thank you.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, to my spiritual family. My name is Andre Jett. I'm from Canton, Connecticut, 16 Bark Drive is where I live. I own a business in Granby, Connecticut, but I choose to worship here in Bloomfield. I want to talk to you a little bit about why I chose to worship in Bloomfield. It's got a lot to do with the First Cathedral, but more importantly for me, it's got more to do about what they do in the community. And I think that that's the piece that's being lost somehow in this conversation. I had notes on my phone, but spirit is moving me to just talk about not all the things that you've heard First Cathedral be responsible for from a community perspective, but I think one of the things that we're missing now is, was Doug McCrory. I know Doug was here, one of my fraternity brothers, so I know he speaks the truth. But he talked about there not being any law on the books for taxing the 501(c)(3). Now, if that's true, I'm asking you, why isn't this anything more than a big waste of time? And it's a waste of time that all of these people could be doing something different in terms of impacting lives in the community. But yet, we are forced to sit here and have this discussion about something that we all know is probably inappropriate. I ask you, in the last, Archbishop has been pastoring for over 47 years, but what is different about the First Cathedral today than it was 18 years ago when it moved to Bloomfield? Have they stopped their mission in terms of being truthful to the people in the community, trying to lead them through a spiritual growth? Has any of that stopped? I don't think so. I don't think so. So what is different? We heard a lot earlier today about political motivation. And if that's why we're here, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I think this has got to stop. If this is about some political issues, this has got to stop, because we're all wasting time. And it's value, it's God's time. We're wasting God's time in this moment. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Wow. So...
Stay her up. We need to say something.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, community members. Be honest with you, I heard late about this. And when I got here, a couple of my colleagues from the state had already spoken, but I sat in the hallway and I was listening to people talk and people speak. And some of the things that came to my mind were spirituality, our town, our church. And I think we need to take into consideration is this. Is this something that we have to do at this point in time? Is this the right action to take? Are we attacking, are we going after an institution that is actually doing more good for the community way it's actually standing right now? Are these the same people in this town that have built this town, put the church up, and actually put us all in office? And I gotta say this, we're supposed to be for the people, we're supposed to represent the people, we vow to protect the people, the people. I'm here today, I could be gone tomorrow, but these people put me into office, they put us all into office. So just like Saturday at the March for Save Our Lives, one of the things that was said was, "We put you in, we'll take you out." So we, I'm not saying that as a threat, because me, myself, I go to church, my trustee at my church, and I go to church every Sunday. So I fear no one. What I'm saying to you is, we have to really look at something else, because this is not the right move to make. It is not. And so we need to do the right thing, listen to what the citizens are saying. I'm 100% behind the citizens. And again, I apologize for being late, but when I got here, the first thing I did was start talking to people. So we have to listen to the people. Thank you.
So once again, thank you for being here, and thank you for voicing your concerns. I am very, going to be very deliberate in my words, because I have to be. It's no secret that I'm an ordained minister. It's no secret that I honor Archbishop Bailey, Pastor Greer, my Bishop Jonathan Ramsey Jr. It's no secret that we know the importance of the church and what the church offers the community. I want to be very clear, and I feel comfortable because the saints are going to pray. If y'all haven't been praying already, y'all going to start praying for her now. I want to be very clear that this council was not privy to what was going on. I want to be very clear that this council did not initiate any such action. I want to be very clear about that. I want to be very clear that this council honors all the nonprofits in our town. We are grateful for your service. We're grateful for everyone that comes here on Sundays, everyone that goes to our farm, everyone that patronizes the business in this town, everyone that lives here. I want to be very clear about that. I also have heard everything that was said tonight. And I do believe that we need to set it right. I do believe that we need to make sure that whatever the reasonings are behind this, that we get to the root of it, and that we understand it. What I would like, what I would like, is to call a special meeting on this Thursday at 5:00 PM. And I'm going to ask you all to be here. I'm going to ask all the pastors to come out. I can't call and invite the pastors, but you can. And we will sit down with the tax assessor. And if we need to have the attorney here, we will have the attorney here. And if you need to bring your attorneys, bring your attorneys. And when we are finished, we will be finished with this issue. So once again, I thank you for coming. I thank you for showing the power of the church. I thank you for showing the power of the nonprofits, and I thank you for taking the time to voice to this issue. And I promise you that we as a council, there's not, there's not much that we can do to change the laws, whatever they are, but I believe that we can influence them in some way. And I believe that in some way, we can come together and make this issue amicable for all involved. So once again, I thank you. We do have other business to take care of. 5:00 PM on this Thursday. So I, what we're going, what we're probably going to do, because if everyone comes, as you can see, the hall is a little tight. And I know I've gotten text messages about the other people that are outside the hall. I would like to be able to offer another space. We will find another space to house everyone. And we will get that information out. We do have a email listings to our churches. We will get that information out by tomorrow.
It's an information session, right? Not a special meeting? Because meetings are being held in this council chamber, so if it goes somewhere else?
It'll be, it'll be a discussion. How about that?
Yeah, just to clarify the case.
Yeah, it'll be a discussion. And we will, we will send that information out to where the new meeting space will be so that we can accommodate everyone.
Next question.
Yes.
You said the council wasn't privy to what was going on from the onset, so who was behind it? Like, how do we get to the root understanding of where this originated from?
So we will explain that at the meeting on Thursday, but I do believe that the assessor's office is where all of this is housed. But we will give you, we will make sure that, once again, the assessor is there and that the entire process...
The assessor is here tonight.
So how can we be properly prepared, right?
The assessor is here tonight. There's the assessor right there.
Can you have the assessor?
Point of order. I don't, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe that the assessor is prepared to speak this evening.
He's not on the agenda, that's why.
So, and here's, here's one of the other issues that we have. We have a full agenda that we have not gone through. And I'm really asking you to please give us an opportunity. That's why I have called a meeting for Thursday so that this will be the only thing that... That's why I have called a meeting for Thursday, so that this will be the only thing that we discuss. We have to get to the other items on this agenda.
Well, they can be continued until Thursday. We're here now, right?
Yes. We'll be here on Thursday.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, could I, could I request that at least the town manager explain the process that we're going through and how we got to this place in the first place?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Under state law, all nonprofits are required to file a quadrennial, every four years, paperwork on their various activities and so forth. This is Bloomfield's fourth year, so the paperwork was filed. Paperwork was sent to the First Cathedral. No one responded to the First Cathedral. If I could, Archbishop, I was asked to, I appreciate your comments and whatnot, but let me finish my explanation, then you can, I'd be happy to entertain any response. It's our understanding that the appropriate material was sent to the First Cathedral. It was not responded to. We met with the principals of the First Cathedral last, I believe it was Thursday morning. They informed us at that time that there was a ninety-five-year-old woman who was responsible for routing the internal mail and so forth within, within the church. And that apparently, for some reason, that mail was not forwarded to the right location, the right person, and so forth. So because nothing was filed, the church was added to the grand list of the town. I want to also indicate to you that the town has a reserve against tax refunds and corrections that are made throughout the year. And that was increased in the tentative budget that's before the town council now, to take into the account the possible changes and any corrections that had to be made. The town hired a special tax-exempt attorney, since we did not want to go ahead and proceed with these actions until we were absolutely sure that there was a tax issue on these properties. It is not only the First Cathedral. It is the Jewish Community Center pool. It's the Our Farm 4-H Center on Mountain Road. We're looking into the seminary, St. Thomas Seminary, to make sure that those activities that are carried on by these various nonprofit organizations meet the provisions of the state tax provisions under which the assessor can go ahead and assess a property or not. Certain things, as Mr. Baker brought up over here, have been really, I won't say officially agreed to, but there's a recognition that there may be some taxable property at the First Cathedral, including the credit union. And that there may be a provision in the credit union's lease, that if that portion of the church is taxed, the credit union will go ahead and pay for those taxes. The way the system works is that a evaluation of the property is carried out. Those portions of the property that are conducting taxable operations, such as the credit union, could be taxed, okay? The rest of the property is not taxed, okay?
I'll ask you a question.
So can I finish, Archbishop? I appreciate it, if I could finish. Yes, you can, when I'm done, if that's okay with you.
Let me ask you before you finish. What I don't understand is, I can understand you asking about the other situation, but why thereafter? And all due respect, what I can't understand is, after we've answered the questions that you've asked us through our lawyer, why thereafter would you want to know all of the salaries of all the employees? What has that got to do with it?
From my understanding of the law, and that was not something that went through the town offices, that was an inquiry made by the attorney, okay?
Yes, but he's working for you.
Yes, but he does not, every single question that comes through does not go through me. It goes through the town's attorney, and in his estimate, I guess that was something that should have been asked for. I will check into it and get you an answer back. I'll be happy to. But beyond the salary issue, the town is looking at these properties. I can also point out that on March fourteenth, in the Connecticut Mirror, a similar situation is going on with nonprofit group homes in Middlesex County area. And as was pointed out by several people here, this has become more and more of an issue because of outside state finances and municipalities looking a lot closer at their grand list. Our attorneys are supposed to have a preliminary indication to us as to what properties and portions thereof may or may not be taxable by this coming week, by Thursday, probably of this week. That's why I suggested to the mayor that probably later this week, we should have a meeting, an open forum, so that you can all be there and hear at least some of the preliminary results. The town of Bloomfield has had significant litigation over the past with both Seaberry Retirement Community and Dumcaster Retirement Community, which has been alluded here by several people, that cost the town a lot of money. It costs those institutions a lot of money. Yes, there was some property that was added to the tax rolls in Bloomfield because of that litigation. I can tell you from my perspective, on the, working for the town, that we are not interested in getting into prolonged, protracted, expensive litigation over any of these issues. And when I see what the attorneys have come back with, and see if they make any sense, we'll be talking with the various institutions that are involved. We have had informal meetings with the First Cathedral, with the JCC, the Jewish Community Center, and with representatives from Our Farm, over their respective potentially taxable portions of their property. And that's kind of where the status is right now. It's with the attorneys, and they're reviewing the data. I would say one thing to you, as a side comment. One thing that may be of benefit to these organizations is that not all of them have had all of their organizational paperwork, their ten ninety, or their nine ninety forms and other documentation, their organizational charters and others, in a form, and we have had to wait and ask for that data. But they all now have three-ring binders, in some cases with nineteen tabs in them, that have all of this organizational background material. So if they are challenged at any point in the future, they have it all put together. That's kind of a side benefit to this whole discussion. I want to also say that as the chief executive for Bloomfield and as its chief administrator, we are very, very, very aware of the services and the love and caring and support that all of the churches in Bloomfield provide to our population here. We have twenty thousand, over twenty thousand souls here in Bloomfield, and this council, and prior councils, and myself, and the town staff are very much interested in making sure everyone has a healthy and as happy as possible life in our community. I'd like to say one other thing. I was the town manager in Avon for thirty-two years and retired. There were six churches in Avon. And we had robust service clubs, Rotary, Lions, Civitan, the VFW in Avon. When I came to Bloomfield, you've got over thirty churches here, and the Rotary and the Lions are suffering for membership, okay? The service structure in Bloomfield is, as has been pointed out here, has been brought out by the churches, okay? And the churches form a fundamental part of Bloomfield, its culture, and the services that are delivered. And I don't want any of you to think that this is an attack on the churches or anybody else. We're following the state guidelines. There was a court case in two thousand and nine in Killingley, at St. Joseph's Church, over some form of taxable operation. I talked to Senator McCrory earlier, and some of your other legislative delegation, and I'm gonna be talking to Senator Beth Bye, that what needs to be done is that the nonprofits, not only in Bloomfield, but in the state of Connecticut, need to get together and sponsor legislation to clear up what is a cloudy area for the tax assessors, and for us on the council, and those administering your affairs here in the town. And thank you for giving me the opportunity.
And forgive me for interrupting you.
Good evening. If I can, I hope I'm not out of order with this, but just a question, comment. And Mr. Schenk, I know you spoke eloquently and explained everything, but the thing that comes to mind is, we give tax breaks to businesses all the time, to bring them into town and keep them in the town. In this situation, it seems like there's inequity, because we're trying to tax something that's doing very good, and we're trying to keep them in the town, but you give tax breaks to other businesses. Not to mention, some of the nonprofits you mentioned were not religious institutions. There's a separation. And so you can't include everything you said into one pot, because you have to separate out the religious institutions. That's something we really need to think about.
Thank you very much. So once again, I am pleased, asking all of you to be here on Thursday at 5:00 PM. We're going to find out the location, and we're gonna send that information out by tomorrow, so that you can share that information with your congregation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh. It's holding me.
Archbishop, it's Monday, Thursday?
Yes.
Oh, it is Monday, Thursday. We can't be here Monday, Thursday. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I forgot, Thursday is Monday, Thursday. We cannot be here for Thursday. These are when services are going on throughout the community. What about the, can we do it the following Monday? No, I'm sorry. I'm out of state. I'm out of state next week. All next week. It doesn't matter if I pick another day. No. I'm out of state.
Whatever date will work for you, we will work it out. Whatever date works for you guys, inform everybody else that that day.
I appreciate it. Let me see.
I love you too.
I love you too.
I love you too.
Good job.
Good job.
I was just thankful I had the opportunity to go in there.
Vincent, give us back to Archbishop, please.
I have a bathroom.
India. This is who I want to sign in. This is who I want to sign in.
She's very cool up here.
Nah, I don't know about.
You all right there?
What?
Yeah, so I gave the other sheet, and put the date on it for you.
Yeah, so I gave the other sheet, and put the date on it for you.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just did that.
Should you bring your car?
No, I heard rumors.
But you never know whether it's a few or less.
How long did it take you to get here?
You're gonna be here until you're...
Out there?
I'm only teasing.
We could do it in your auditorium over there, or we could do it at the, you know, high school.
Well, he's got a, the Archbishop is going to Martin, a big Martin Luther King Center or something.
Will this be in your way if I set this up?
Okay.
Probably won't come on, so...
Why is that great? I saw it down in North Carolina, where it was really a little bit of warm weather. It was cold.
It didn't stick, but...
No, yeah, but it's cold.
Whereabouts in North Carolina?
I was in Raleigh, New York.
Oh, okay, right in the center.
I was in Charlotte, Charlotte, New York.
Okay.
Hello.
I think it was one day.
Yeah. And I'm stuck inside the building. I'm stuck inside the building, window, window. But it was good. Unfortunately, the timing was a little bad, as far as... Work-wise, it was a little bad. It was... Not gonna be Thursday now?
No, I will have to set something up in maybe next week, just the Archbishop has to go to Martin Luther King Center.
I didn't want to throw you this opportunity.
Well, I think what we're gonna need to do is get you prepped with a PowerPoint or something like that, or outline, and what's involved, and statute or stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
I know that.
And by the time you do that, then that should be a resolution.
Yeah.
You're doing wonderful. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mark?
My name is Ron Stewart. I live at 52 Kenwood Circle, Bloomfield. I've been living in Bloomfield for about 35 years. I was hoping to address you guys after the presentation, but now I'm here, so we can talk a little bit about it. I've been involved in construction in the year for, I would say about 30 years. I've done most of the big project in the state. I helped to write the school program, where the minority contractor performed work, 20% of the work with no bonding. As a matter of fact, I helped to negotiate that 20% with the union. I sat around a table with the state years ago to create the seventh pillar of Adrian's Landing, and to date, we have done, I would say about $200 million of work with no bonding. The average school contract in Hartford was about $25 million, that's a fact. That is a fact. And every general contractor that walking through the door to look at, to present to us, their program as to how they're going to implement or to get minority on the job, they come knowing that they have to provide the bonding. I remember a meeting with Turner Construction. They came in, they had 20%, meeting started, and I, they asked for bonding for roofing, bonding for different packages, 300,000 packages, and I said to Turner, the program that you bid on, the RFP you respond to, asks you to provide minority contractors on the project with no bonding. So, if you cannot, they said there are 800 million of governors, so as a result, they cannot provide minority contractors on the job with no bond. So, I folded my binder, and I said to Turner, it seems to me as if you're not qualified for this project, because if you cannot provide work for MBE with no bonding, that means you're not qualified. The meet was over, and when I walked through the door, the next question they asked ought to get me back in the room. As a result, Turner came back, everybody learned the famous term, safeguard. We worked on the project, all MBE, did 20% of the work, there was no issue. I worked at Adrian's Landing. I did the stadium, $749,000 with no bond. I did Morgan Street Garage, C.R. sewing, design-built, $1.7 million with no bond. I did the stadium, the convention center, $400,000 with, on Gilbane, with no bond. So, now I'm hearing that we're bidding, we spent about $200, $25 million in Bloomfield. We have folks at a table, Joe Suggs, who's been around a long time, he knows the issue in the community. We have this gentleman right here, you were a building committee back in the days, last, last, last council, you were involved in the project, right? We know the issue. Now, it is surprising to see that we have this project that went to bed, we have so-called minority supporters on the project, and minority contractors that are truly not minority. They're truly not small business, and then the few minority contractors that lives in Bloomfield that have the capacity and capability to do the work are pushed out. One of my charge back in Hartford School System was to vet the companies that came professed into the MBE or WNBE, and I disqualified most of them, because they were major companies creating sham companies, MBE or WBE, to do the work. So, you take a company like the ceiling, what's the name of the ceiling company? The ceiling contractor. The major contractor that took your job, that took your bid on the ceiling company. They are a huge, one of the largest ceiling company in the state. All this guy did is to set up his system and a business that WNBE bid the same project, they have the buying power, that they can buy the product cheaper. How can a local Bloomfield resident MBE compete? And again, one thing I always say at a table, one of the reason why we create the program for Hartford is to create economic development. And economic development is going to be, when you hire a MBE, we're going to buy a lunch in the local stores, we're going to go to the barber shop in our community, we're going to hire from our community, we're going to go to the supermarket from our community. So, if you're not trying to address the issue of economic development, then we're failing. It is not just to build a building, you have a bunch of folks driving from Greenwich, Westport, Southport, or wherever, come to the lunch bucket, work on the project, and go back home. There's no benefit there for us. So, I'm hoping that you guys will learn from this and create a program, or find a way to be a little more sensitive to the MBE community. And if you don't know, you ask, because we have, we have made this real before, we don't need to reinvent it. We have done this for years, we have been in the business for years, building facility. The Adrian's Landing report that went to the state will tell you, the minority contractor performed equal or better than the major contractor. There was no issue. Governor Warren put aside a million dollars just in case a MBE failed. When the project was done, he gave the million dollars to us, because we didn't fail, we succeeded. So, guys, I'm asking you, the decision makers, the folks at table, when you're at table representing us, please be conscious, be considerate. If you don't know, ask. And so, dear, thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, is Mr. Pinkney still here?
He's still here.
Mr. Pinkney. Thank you for hanging in there with us, Mr. Pinkney. Whereas tonight, we have the distinguished pleasure of honoring a man who has had a long and successful career in and out of Bloomfield, and whereas Nicholas, I'm going to mess it all up, so I'm just going to say, Pankey was born to German nationals in the Ukraine, and after his father's death, he and his mother immigrated to America in 1953, when he was 13 years old. And whereas Nicholas lived in Waterbury until 1958, and graduated from Crosby High School, and went on to graduate from the University of Hartford Art School with a bachelor's degree in fine arts in 1963, and served as a member of the adjunct facility in the late 1970s and the early 1980s. And whereas he served not only as a past member of the Greater Hartford J.C., but also as vice president of the member of its board of directors. And whereas Nicholas boasts a long and prolific career with his reach extending into organizations such as the Greater Hartford Open Golf Tournament, where he served as the executive committee, and whereas, and was co-chairman in 1969. He was also a member of the Republican Town Committee in 1968, and served as vice chairman, and from 1972 to 1973, he served as secretary and president of the Bloomfield Lions Club. And whereas Nicholas was a past member of the Board of Tax Review, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Griffin Line Task Force, the Capital Region Council of Governments, the Bloomfield Plan of Development Steering Committee, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, serving as chair from 1988 to 2001. His recent retirement from the last two commissions mentioned is one of the main reasons we are honoring him here tonight. His dedication and involvement, knowledge and expertise have greatly benefited the work of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Those who have worked with and alongside Nicholas have nothing but the utmost respect and admiration for him. Bloomfield is so fortunate to have had the privilege of his service, and now therefore I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, mayor of the town of Bloomfield, on behalf of the Bloomfield Town Council, do proclaim Monday, March 26, 2018, as a day to honor Nicholas Pankey for his many contributions and commitment to serving our beloved town.
Thank you very much. You know, when I came here, first of all, I couldn't find any parking, but I figured this was Oscar night, so I already had a speech ready, you know, I was going to thank the director, the producer, here, my co-star, who's sitting right over there. And also, my makeup artist, and definitely my hairstylist. Well, anyway, putting the humor aside, Madam Mayor, councilpeople, town manager, secretary, thank you very much for this honor. It's appreciated. And I was happy and pleased to serve those 38 years, half of my life almost. I learned a lot about myself, I learned a lot about the people in town, I learned a lot about the town. Most of all, I learned, the reason I did what I did is, when I graduated from college, my wife, our first child, we moved to Bloomfield. A diverse community, diverse in population, diverse in business, in housing, in industry, and their desire to keep Bloomfield here, an open space community, where people can enjoy the life of nature, but throw a stone into Hartford to do the business. That, that was probably one of my reasons. So, what I want to do is just share tonight with the people that really made it possible. It's the citizens of Bloomfield, who I hope they had the confidence and trust in me to elect me and re-elect me all that time. And that kept me going. Of course, I don't want to forget the people that were just as important, their staff. I don't, I can't say enough about staff. I respect their professionalism, I admired the dedication to their work. They made the job of the commissioners easier to make an intelligent and fair decision, because they had all the information there all the time. And also, that goes for the past staff and the present staff. What I would recommend to the town councilors, maybe we should make a staff admiration day or something like that, you know, because it seems that, I don't think people really appreciate them enough, you know? They come into the town hall, they see a face, they bitch, they have complaints, you know? But they forget that, they're people just like you and I, you know? They have families, they have kids, they have mortgages, they have to schlep during the bad weather to the town hall.
...product cheaper, how can a local Bloomfield resident MBE compete? And again, one thing I always say at the table, one of the reasons why we create the program for Hartford is to create economic development. And economic development is going to be when you hire a MBE, we're going to buy a lunch in the local stores, we're going to go to the barber shop in our community, we're going to hire from our community, we're going to go to the supermarket from our community. So if you're not trying to address the issue of economic development, then we're failing. It is not just to build a building, you have a bunch of folks driving from Greenwich, Westport, Southport, or wherever, come to the lunch bucket, work on the project, and go back home. There's no benefit there for us. So I'm hoping that you guys will learn from this and create a program or find a way to be a little more sensitive to the MBE community. And if you don't know, you ask, because we have, we have made this real before, we don't need to reinvent it. We have done this for years, we have been in the business for years, building facility. The Adrian's Learning Report that went to the state will tell you the minority contractor performed equal or better than the major contractor. There was no issue. Governor Roland put aside a million dollars just in case a MBE failed. When the project was done, he gave the million dollars to us because we didn't fail, we succeeded. So guys, I am asking you, the decision makers, the folks at table, when you're at table representing us, please be conscious, be considerate. If you don't know, ask. And so there, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, is Mr. Pinkney still here?
He's still here.
Mr. Pinkney. Thank you for hanging in there with us, Mr. Pinkney. Whereas tonight, we have the distinguished pleasure of honoring a man who has had a long and successful career in and out of Bloomfield. And whereas Nicholas, I'm going to mess it all up, so I'm just going to say, Pankey was born to German nationals in the Ukraine, and after his father's death, he and his mother immigrated to America in 1953 when he was 13 years old. And whereas Nicholas lived in Waterbury until 1958 and graduated from Crosby High School and went on to graduate from the University of Hartford Art School with a bachelor's degree in Fine Arts in 1963, and served as a member of the adjunct facility in the late 1970s and the early 1980s. And whereas he served not only as a past member of the Greater Hartford J.C., but also as vice president of the member of its board of directors. And whereas Nicholas boasts a long and prolific career with his reach extending into organizations such as the Greater Hartford Open Golf Tournament, where he served as the executive committee and whereas, and was co-chairman in 1969. He was also a member of the Republican Town Committee in 1968 and served as vice chairman. And from 1972 to 1973, he served as secretary and president of the Bloomfield Lions Club. And whereas Nicholas was a past member of the Board of Tax Review, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Griffin Line Task Force, the Capital Region Council of Governments, the Bloomfield Plan of Development Steering Committee, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, serving as chair from 1988 to 2001. His recent retirement from the last two commissions mentioned is one of the main reasons we are honoring him here tonight. His dedication and involvement, knowledge and expertise have greatly benefited the work of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Those who have worked with and alongside Nicholas have nothing but the utmost respect and admiration for him. Bloomfield is so fortunate to have had the privilege of his service. And now therefore I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor of the town of Bloomfield, on behalf of the Bloomfield Town Council, do proclaim Monday, March 26, 2018, as a day to honor Nicholas Pankey for his many contributions and commitment to serving our beloved town.
You know, when I came here, first of all, I couldn't find any parking, but I figured this was Oscar night. So I already had a speech ready, you know, I was going to thank the director, the producer, my co-star, who's sitting right over there. And also my makeup artist, and definitely my hairstylist. Well, anyway, putting the humor aside, Madam Mayor, council people, town manager, secretary, thank you very much for this honor. It's appreciated. And I was happy and pleased to serve those 38 years, half of my life almost. I learned a lot about myself, I learned a lot about the people in town, I learned a lot about the town. Most of all, I learned the reason I did what I did is when I graduated from college, my wife, our first child, we moved to Bloomfield. A diverse community, diverse in population, diverse in business, in housing, in industry, and their desire to keep Bloomfield here an open space community where people can enjoy the life of nature, but throw a stone into Hartford to do the business. That, that was probably one of my reasons. So what I want to do is just share tonight with the people that really made it possible. It's the citizens of Bloomfield, who I hope they had the confidence and trust in me to elect me and reelect me all that time. And that kept me going. Of course, I don't want to forget the people that were just as important, that were staff. I don't, I can't say enough about staff. I respect their professionalism. I admired the dedication to their work. They made the job of the commissioners easier to make an intelligent and fair decision because they had all the information there all the time. And also, that goes for the past staff and the present staff. What I would recommend to the town council is maybe we should make a staff admiration day or something like that, you know, because it, it seems that, I don't think people really appreciate them enough, you know? They come into the town hall, they see a face, they bitch, they have complaints, you know? But they forget that they're people just like you and I, you know? They have families, they have kids, they have mortgages, they have to schlep during the bad weather to the town hall and other facilities. So I think that would be a nice idea, you know? Now, just, this is a little personal thing. My dad died when I was 11, was right after the war. He was a good man. Lost everything. We lost a home, lost a farm, lost a business, lost family members that died in the war, lost friends, died in the war. But he was a good man. And whether I remember it correctly or not, it's probably not that important, but he was always there. He was the last one at a dinner table. If there was something, he gave it to the kids. He would come home from work, he'd bring back a half a sandwich, you know? Times were tough. So to me, it was it. He said that, you know, it's easy to take. We all take. But he said that it's really hard to give. But, but the reward at the end of the days, you're going to be happy with yourself. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to have the building committee get ready to please present.
Thanks very much. Thanks, dear.
You're very welcome.
Nick.
Mr. Sheng?
No.
I don't even want to go to regular business. Just let them do what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that.
I want to table the regular business. Huh? He's not here. That's what I want to do.
Can absolutely present, can you table the rest of the agenda? Absolutely, please. We can just table the rest of the agenda.
Oh, you want to table it? Just show them.
The rest of the appointments can be on the, the rest of the.
I had no idea.
I couldn't take my notes.
This is a short version?
The 45 and that LP.
Can I ask him to answer the question?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I guess two points to make, neither of which will probably be satisfying. One is that our construction manager, who was handling all of the scope reviews and the bidding, is not with us tonight to answer the questions directly. And I would hesitate to try to answer off the cuff and give someone bad information or misleading information. So I guess I would ask, and also because tonight we prepared to respond to the new charge that you gave us, which really doesn't include at least directly minority hiring. So all that to say, I'm not sure that we can respond directly to any of the inquiries by those who are interested in how many minority contractors and their location and the number of local contractors that will be retained. However, I will commit that we will have that information fully vetted so that everyone will see who was selected, how they were selected, and why they were selected. Should I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, I saw a hand. Again, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Joe Suggs. I'm chairman of the Human Services Facility Building Committee, and I'd like to begin by thanking the council for the opportunity to present our report in response to the council's expanded scope of charges to our committee, which you adopted at your meeting on December 11, 2017 meeting. But before I begin, I'd like to introduce the members of the committee, if I may, Madam Mayor, it'll be very brief. Some were here but could not stay. But just very quickly, the members of the committee are Mike Weissman, who was vice chair, Bob Berman, Alan Bogowski, Stan Casperson, and he was here, I don't know, looks like he may have left, Lou DiSario, Kevin Hussein, Lucille Marcy, who was also here, Paula Wallach is here joining us tonight, and Elizabeth Washington. In addition, ex-official members are Yvette Hugh Cannell, Director of Senior Services, Dave Malesko, Director of Leisure Services, and I believe Dave is here, Camille Halian, who is Director of Social and Youth Services. We also have Dave Simons, our architect, with Moser Pylon Nelson, and of course Nancy Hayes, who is Director of Purchasing and Risk Management for the town of Bloomfield. As the council is aware, most of the committee's activities and efforts has been related to the planning, designing, and scheduling for construction of a new human resources, resource, human services facility located at 330 Park Avenue. However, as I mentioned earlier this evening, tonight's report is going to focus exclusively on the exploration and evaluation of other options, locations, and features for a facility consistent with council's December request. So let's see if we can... So let me start by listing those six expanded scope items that were examined by the committee. The first is performing deferred maintenance to extend the life of the building, that's the existing building, until funding is available. The second is renovating the existing building to like new. Third, considering other features in a new building, such as showers, generators, solar panels, an auditorium, or an indoor track. Four is consideration of an indoor pool, including different ownership management models such as West Hartford Cornerstone model. Five was consideration of the best combination of locations of the services currently housed at the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human Services Facility, which could generate a recommendation to build more than one new building. And finally, number six is other option, other feasibility and estimated cost options. So what we have provided, Madam Mayor, is a written report which details our analysis and conclusion for each of those six. You have the executive summary, the six expanded scope items, and an appendix which contains the council motion, the Moser Pylon Nelson report on item number one, and the results of the public survey that we undertook. At this point, I'd like to call on Mark Weissman to present the first portion of the report, and he'll be followed by Dave Simons to discuss deferred maintenance on the existing building, and then Mark will come back to conclude the schedule going forward. So while Mark is coming up, I wanted to note, a special note of thanks to Mark for volunteering to collect all of the data and information gathered by all of the members of the committee, along with Nancy and Dave and other members, and to assemble it into this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the town council. The majority of this report was given to the finance subcommittee last week, so we have some enhancements to that, and we will also get into where we're at with the new building as well, as of this date. So the first item on the expanded scope was deferred maintenance. And just to, just to define that quickly, we're going to have Dave Simons come back up afterwards and go into it in more detail. But basically, deferred maintenance is bringing the existing building up to code, as well as repairing the roof, some other minor things that he'll get into, but really the majority of work is, is code work, which includes a lot of, a lot of other things under that umbrella as well. And spoiler alert for, for what Dave's going to tell you, the estimated project cost for that is $24.6 million. Dave also delved into what probably would make sense as a bit more sort of second-tier work after that, and that's an additional $1.7 million. And this overall schedule for that, assuming that it went to referendum this year for that project, would be construction from the fall of 2019 through the spring of 2022. So we're going to get into that in a lot more detail with Dave. So moving on to item number two, which is renovating the existing building to like new. So the difference between item number one and item number two, item two includes all of the work of item number one, but it also includes substantial renovation to the interior of the building to configure the spaces to precisely meet the needs of all the services, as a new building would. It would involve some major demolition of portions of the building, because we know the building is much, much larger than program requires for today's needs and future needs as well. And there would be probably a few small additions to the building as well, new entrance way, minor additions, again, so that this building would meet exactly all the program requirements. So that estimated project cost to do all that is $35.1 million. And the schedule for that, again, assuming a referendum this year to go forward with it, construction would start spring of 2020 and go all the way through spring of 2022. The, we do know that given the serious nature, significant nature of renovations in the building, that there would be significant disruption of services during that time as, as things are shifted around and vacated in order to do all that work. Given the high cost and the disruption, this option is, is not recommended by the building committee compared with the other options that we're looking at. Now, we're also asked to look at many other kind of features in the building. I have to say that anytime the building committee has been asked to look and include anything, we have considered it. Really, the summary of items that, that we looked at here, here's a listing of them, and I can go through it quickly and give you the dollar amounts, the ranges of what they would cost. Locker and shower rooms to be associated with the gymnasium program in the building would run about 1.2 to 1.7 million. Standby generator, about half a million dollars. Solar panels, about 1.7 million. An auditorium, 3.5 to 4.5 million. An indoor track, about 1.2 million to 2 million. An indoor swimming pool in the range of 7 to 11 million. And playfield improvements, let me qualify that, we are rebuilding the playfields as part of the, the new project. It'll have new materials, new drainage, there'll be irrigation for the fields. What we did not include in this new project was lighting for the fields and, and a, an independent utility building, a concession stand, if you will, out at the fields. Now, there's a lot of little marks and figures here on this, on these things, let me translate all this for you as we go through these. The, the little check marks you see, the generator, the solar panels, an indoor swimming pool, and those playfield improvements that I talked about are all considered in the new building, and the new building will easily accommodate those future additions of those things. So if we want to incorporate these things with additional monies, this new building design will accept them. Now, excuse me here. Now, if we looked at the, of those, if we looked at the generator, the solar panels, and the playfield improvements, not only are they easily incorporated into the new design as a future thing, but they could actually roll into the current schedule. If we want to spend the additional money on those things, we could fit them right into this schedule with the new building. Whereas if we wanted to be looking at locker rooms and showers, an auditorium, or an indoor track, those things would require redesign, and therefore an extended schedule. So they're not easily incorporated into what we have. Now, we also did ask, in our public survey, we did ask the participants to, they were asked to rank these added features, and really, the results came back in the survey, there were, there were no distinctive preferences or rejections. Everything came out sort of middle ground as not unimportant and not very important. So that really didn't tell us very much. But it also, but we also asked the respondents, should the town consider spending additional funds for any of these features? 75% of the respondents said yes, and 25% said no. Item four in the expanded scope is the indoor pool, more specifically looking at an alternative model for how it would be operated. And the, the best resource really for our investigation was Cornerstone Pool in West Hartford, and it is run like a business, but we did learn that it runs in a deficit. It costs money to run the pool, even though they charge for individuals, they charge for families, they have different rates for things, but it has always run in a deficit. And even, even though West Hartford has a larger population and they have higher economic indicators compared to Bloomfield. So really, we're not saying, don't build a pool. I think we all want a pool. I think what we're saying is, it deserves a lot more research to figure out how we're going to operate it, what it's really going to cost in the long run. We know what construction cost is going to be, as I said, between 7 and 11 million dollars. There's different features and sizes of pools, so that's why it's such a, a broad range. But we certainly would have to spend a lot more time investigating what it would mean financially to the town, including how it would be funded to build it. If it does operate like a business, then it might, we might... If it does operate like a business, then we might not be able to use tax-exempt bonds to do that. And we would probably also want to look at competition around the area for other pools and get some indication of what kind of use the pool would actually get. All right. Item number five was the consideration of the best combination and locations of the current services that are housed in the existing building, which could generate recommendations to build more than one building. The first thing we found out in researching this is the, really, the overwhelming benefits of collaboration of having the services all together, for the staff, for the users, really, for the community as a whole. It was really compelling to us how these services should be together. And what was even more compelling along that rationale is, this new building that is designed, 40% of the new building is shared space among the services, among the departments. So right away, that tells us, if we're going to separate the services, not only do we lose the benefits of the collaboration, but now we're losing as much as 40% of this building that has to be duplicated in different locations. So, big cost factor there. I put up here a future swimming pool. If we were to separate the services, the departments that are there now, and then at some point, go ahead and build a swimming pool, well, it's obviously not going to be shared by all those departments, because the departments are separated. So who gets the pool? It's another conundrum about separating the services in the long run. And we also learned in our research that the Bond Council does advise us that, under the current referendum, we could not pull out two of the three departments and still be valid under this referendum. So that's item number five. And also, under number five, we did ask, under the survey, I said, do you agree with having the three departments continue to share a building? And we had 73% say yes, 9% said no, and 18% were uncertain. And you have the full survey results in your written package there, all the results of that. Number six was kind of a catch-all for any other feasibility, anything else that we've been asked, anything else we could think of. It had been requested, there was talk about, well, maybe this new building isn't large enough. Everybody's scared that it's not going to serve us for the future. Well, the Building Committee is convinced that our professionals, both when Centerbrook looked at it, and when Moser, Pylon, and Nelson looked at it for us and spent tremendous amount of time working with all the departments, figuring out what today's and tomorrow's needs are, and they've come up with a building of 56,000 square feet. And we're very comfortable with that number. If we were to go and add any more square footage to the building, not only do we feel it's not necessary, but you really can't just, it would not be a lump of square footage annexed to this existing design. It would have to be allocated to different spaces, which right now do not need the additional space. So we're really talking about an unnecessary redesign, unnecessary money, unnecessary square footage. So we're really comfortable with the size of the building right now. We also looked at the idea of, well, do the code work first. In other words, do the deferred maintenance, item number one, and then follow it up later, when the town has more money, more time, more bonding capacity, do item number two, then renovate it like new. And when we analyze that, they're basically renovating it like new would cause pretty much the complete redo of everything we did in number one, to bring it up to code, because of the significant amount of interior renovation. So there is no cost savings by doing number one and then doing number two. You just have to add the two costs together, basically. So you're looking at close to a $60 million project to, in the long run, to try and make this building like new over many, many years. The idea of other locations, there's been talk about moving, locating the senior center in the center of town. We really don't know of a location adequate to hold the senior center. There's been mention of putting it here on Town Hall site. We know that in the library study, a new library worked at the Town Hall site because of the parking utilization, day versus night was a nice match between the library and Town Hall. That is not true with the senior center. It's just the opposite. It's a horrible match. So there's really not enough parking on Town Hall site to locate the senior center here. And there really is no other land in town if we wanted to look at relocating leisure services. Playfields are associated with leisure services. So we really are not recommending going anywhere else than 330 Park Avenue. And the idea of multiple facilities, again, I just, we found it so compelling that these services should stay together. And again, the cost, just the cost of separating facilities is huge compared to a new building. So I am going to turn this over to Dave Simons from Moser, Pylon, Nelson, to go over item number one in more detail. Dave?
Good evening. Again, as Mark mentioned, this is kind of in line with what was presented last week to the Finance Subcommittee. But we did supplement some of the information, just to help clarify some of the questions that were asked. This is the overall project budget. This was in the report package that you did receive. It remains unchanged. Again, and you're going to see a very similar form when we present the new building with the updated budget. And I just want to kind of revisit, the top number is kind of, that represents the construction cost, which is the contractor, all the subcontractor totals, plus all the fees, profit, overhead, bonding, everything that the contractor carries. And so we refer to that as the GMP, or the Guaranteed Maximum Price. And when we see this for the new building, you know, we're really waiting on the GMP from downs. That's what they're working on now. They have all the bids in, they're reviewing the scope with all the subcontractors to make sure they carried the right work. They're reviewing all the requirements to make sure that, you know, really, all the specifications are met, all the project requirements are met. And so that's really the biggest piece of the pie in any project. And then you have below that, the project costs, or the owner costs. And those are professional fees, reimbursables, allowances, like the project owner's project manager, who really helps the owner manage the project, manage paperwork, does some onsite supervision during construction. There's other professional fees, geotechnical, the hazmat fee, special inspections, all those things are required. Probably one of the biggest owner costs that we want to carry in a project is the construction contingency. And we're going to talk about that with the new project, but also here as well. You can see here, for a renovation project, we're carrying 10%. When we do present the new building, that's 5%. There's a lot less risk in new construction than renovation. There's a lot more unknowns. Once we start getting in there, taking the building apart, there's a lot of things that we can find, a lot of things that can happen. You know, maybe we think, okay, this wall's going to remain, we're going to put a new door in it. Well, the whole wall falls down. You've got to rebuild stuff. That's why the owner's contingency is higher. That contingency is there to absorb unknowns, it's there to absorb change orders during construction. We've heard a lot of things about, when we get the GMP, well, that's not the final cost of the project. Exactly, it is not. It is the price of the bid at that point in time. But the bottom line, the project total, which includes the contingency, that should be the high-end number. We should not exceed, again, no guarantee, we should not exceed that contingency. That should carry all the unknowns. And really, in a lot of times, especially with new construction, again, lower risk, easier to control the unknown conditions, once you get out of the ground, really, you get the foundations in, you start to get the steel up, the contractors have their heads in the project, they're doing their summits, they're understanding what they need to build, a lot of the unknowns start to flesh out at that point. And then, once you get to a certain point in the project, if your contingency is very healthy, you can start to look to use that to maybe buy something else, like deferred ad alternates. If we know that there's new furniture that we would like to have, but don't need to have, you can start to look to spend the contingency for those things. But again, that's once we know we're out of the woods with a lot of potential unknowns. We're going to be talking about that a lot with the new building as well, when we present that budget within two weeks. But again, the fact that this is unknown, there's a lot of contingencies in this as a renovation. But even if you lessen those contingencies, even if we move forward with the design and start to really understand that, and we feel a little more comfortable, it's still going to be well over $20 million as a project. I just think there is no getting around that. And again, I think, backtracking to what our charge was, it was to update the deferred maintenance number from Centerbrook Architects. And if you remember, in their report, they had a number, it was a range, it was $15 to $17 million in their report. And there was really no information about what that was. It was just deferred maintenance. And I think everyone understood that it was redoing mechanical systems, it was redoing the roof, redoing some other things like the windows, but there was no estimate. And so we were charged with really doing that. But we also needed to do the code upgrades. We know this building has a lot of code issues. And to continue to occupy this building, we need to bring it up to code. And so there was a lot of questions about what these pieces were. And so what we did, in your report, there's a five-page estimate, which really breaks down all the items. And it corresponds to what's in our narratives in that report. But what we did, and I think, you know, Joe, Councilman Merritt was really kind of digging into some of these items. And so we did kind of group them. The top item was really what was being referred to as the ceiling work. One of the biggest items is, all the mechanical systems are either missing or need to be replaced. And so to do that, you really want to do it all at once. And we recommended doing it kind of area by area, because you need to take the ceilings down. That's going to trigger hazmat abatement. We need to abate certain things within the building before contractors can go in and do the new work. And then you want to go in, you want to put all the new sprinklers in, you want to get all the new mechanical systems in, all the new electrical infrastructure, which is all required. Then you put back the new ceilings, the new lights. Again, to do that work in an area, you need to get everybody out, all the furnishings, everything needs to be moved out. And so we looked at this as a single project, but phased by zones. Really, the most cost-effective way to do this and not have this last for years and years and years is to really tackle it as a project by phases. And we treated it like we would with a school project, where we kind of move people around the building, upgrade an area, move people back into their final finished areas, and then move on to the next zone. As Mark mentioned, the new building's a lot larger than the needs of the occupants, the three departments in BATV. So we do have some of that built-in swing space within the building. And we really only have that during the summers, or when we avoid the summers, because a lot of programs happen in the summer, all the day camps, leisure service has a lot of kids in. The lower level underneath where youth and social services is, typically, except for the summer, a lot of these rooms are vacant, or it's really activities that are just there because they have the space. And so after the summer program is done, you can start to move people into that area, consolidate programs, and you can start to tackle chunks of the building and work your way around. And we really see this happening over a 30-month period. There's going to be a lot of movement. But what we tried to do with this, and it's just an example of a phasing plan, is move every occupant in the building once to a temporary space, update their new area, and then move them back into their final space. And so, really, in our analysis, all this work is required. And really, it should all happen within the phasing. I think as you, you know, you rip the ceilings down, and you vacated an area, we talked about windows needing to be replaced, you know, you really want to rip the windows out when the space is vacated. So most of this work really wants to happen within this phasing scenario. But again, you can see this breakdown of costs. A few of the things can be done either right at the beginning or right at the end. Exterior brick repair, the brick border is in disrepair, it's falling out, which is going to lead to, if it hasn't already, water infiltration in the wall and just further degradation of the wall. So that's something that can happen at any point along the process. The site elements that need repair, handicap parking, the pathways from those handicap spaces into the building either need to be crated and/or repaired. A lot of the entry plazas are either not co-compliant or in complete disrepair and need to be redone. And so that's something that you can either do right up front, or if, you know, building official, fire marshal, or amicable, you could do that at the end of the project. But, you know, getting people from the handicap spots into the building without having people fall down is obviously critical for the project. But again, these upper items are really, really things that you want to move people out of an area, tackle all these items at once, when you can get a big chunk of area emptied and get contractors into those areas, do all the work at once. I think Joe was really trying to, or Councilman Merritt, was really trying to, I think his intent was to maybe take some of these costs and spread it out further. And he was looking at the windows. And I think, just imagine being in a new office space, and then the next year, they're going to rip your outside wall off. I mean, that's really what we're talking about if you do it that way, if you don't do all that work at once. Obviously, it's doable. The budgets do not reflect moving people twice, in and out, in and out. It doesn't reflect doing all this finish work and then ripping the walls off and possibly damaging that new finish work. So while you can spread the costs out, it's going to make the bottom line bigger, just spread it out over more time. Again, this was the phasing plan. We talked about this quite a bit last week. I just briefly explained, again, the concept of how we envisioned this project being approached the most economically feasibly, and really trying to make it, it's going to be painful for the occupants, it's going to be a real distraction, it's going to be a construction zone for, or portions of this building are going to be a construction zone for 30 months at least. And again, without really getting into this project more in depth, you know, there's going to be a lot of little finite nuances that get developed. This is going to be one of the most important things that needs to be figured out, if this was a project that is realized. And so there's going to be a lot of effort put into this thought with everyone involved, including local officials, to make sure fire marshal building officials know that these people are safe. Because 2/3 of this building is going to be occupied by children, seniors, while these contractors are working on this. So that is something that needs to be, you know, really thought about. So I'll turn it back over to Mark. He's going to kind of get into some of the summary and status of where we're at right now.
Okay, so the new building, update on that. We are 100% all the way through our bidding phase. Nothing has been awarded yet. Our construction manager is going through all the bids that have been received, vetting all the bidders, coordinating, there were some combination bids received. So he's sorting through all of that. And I put up here mid-April for construction awards. That is our target. That's been our target ever since we started up again after our short delay. And that is an extremely critical time for this project to proceed and not get into winter conditions. So if we find a way to start this building and award contracts in mid-April, then we are on schedule and will be on budget. With project completion... are on schedule and will be on budget, with project completion about 16 months after that. So, right now, where we stand in looking at the bids that have come in, we are at $22.8 million project cost. Let me go back through what Dave talked about, I want to reiterate, because there's a lot of bandying of different terms and expressions, and you've all heard the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, it's a misnomer, it's not a guaranteed maximum price, but the industry calls it that. It is the construction cost. It is subject to changes, it is subject to anything we find in the unknown, anything we want to add to the project, or any other normal kind of change orders, so it's subject to all of that. And then, on top of the GMP are all the soft costs that Dave talked about, the fees, architect fees, and most importantly, the contingency that we carry. So, this $22.8 million is the project, the overall, the whole thing, everything. And that's where we believe we're at, at first blush, look at the bids that have come in, they're being gone through right now, and then we grouped a bunch of alternates also that we can easily incorporate into the project at any time, and they're about $1.5 million. Not going to get into the details of those yet, we'll be talking about those in the future. And of course, our bond authorization is $22.3 million. So, we're approximately $500,000 above our bond authorization right now for our base So, in summary of all these numbers, okay, our new facility right now, and these numbers are going to change a little bit as we go through the bids, our new facility base bid is $22.8 million, plus a potential of $1.5 in alternates. Option number one, deferred maintenance, $24.6 million, with some additional items, possibly a $1.7 million. And option number two, renovate like new, $35.1 million. So, that compares all those things together. And then, in terms of schedule, right now, if we're able to stay on schedule, then the new facility would be complete the summer of 2019. If we are to stay with the new facility as designed, but we need to go to referendum for additional funds, it would delay that by one year, we believe, so the project would be complete the summer of 2020. And if we are to go to a redesign on the new building with a November referendum, actually, it would be a referendum first followed by redesign, we wouldn't have any funds to redesign unless we go to referendum first, that would delay this project by two years, so we'd be completing in the summer of 2021. And as we talked about before, the item number one, deferred maintenance with a referendum this year would be complete in the spring of 2022, and the same with the renovate like new project, if we went that route. So, we will, you know, I really want to stress that word preliminary, because those numbers on the new facility, we've gone through them just for the first time, and like I said, no contract's been awarded yet. And where I want to go from there is our schedule, what happens between now and a decision time. So, today is March 26th. On April 3rd, at our regular building committee meeting, we will have all the final bid numbers, all the recommendations from our construction manager and architect, they will have their GMP finalized, we understand what the other costs are, so we will have a complete project cost established at our building committee meeting on April 3rd, along with an understanding of those $1.5 million of alternates, which ones we're going to recommend are included, which ones we want to forget about, which ones we say, well, they're nice, but they can always be added on in the future. So, we'll have all that information internally in the building committee on April 3rd. We're going to come two days later to the finance subcommittee and present all that information. So, we'll have a complete recommendation with those hard numbers from the building committee on April 5th. We come back to the town council on April 9th with all of that information as well. And we are hoping, that's literally the deadline, is that week, that week of April, to stay on this critical path schedule and not have costs run up by running into winter conditions or any other problems. Our back is really against the wall from this schedule that we have right now to do that. So, we are trying to get you all of this information, all of the information, and we will have it for you at that point. We also have 90 days from when the bids are received by statute to either reward the contract, or the contractors have the right to withdraw, and we would have to rebid. But really, our critical path is well before that 90 days in order to meet our budget and the schedule that we have. So, that is where we're at, and I think with that, we can, Joe, you want to come back?
I just want to reemphasize the importance of our mid-April construction awards in addition to the winter conditions, which would be a problem, which Mark indicated there are two other factors that are completely out of our control, but nonetheless may have a very significant impact on costs. One is tariffs on steel and aluminum that we did not face up until recently, that will be in place if the project is delayed. Don't know what the effect on the total project will be, but if they go into force, likelihood is that will be an uncontrollable increase of costs. The other is, as you listen to the new Fed chair, you can see we're going into a rising interest rate environment. And so, again, if we can't get out on our April schedule and get delayed, we may face higher interest rates on our borrowing costs. So, again, it's very critical in order to hold the costs as low as possible, that we maintain that mid-April construction awards. So, with that, I thank you for your very kind attention, and we will attempt to respond to any questions that you may have.
Councilman McCrery?
Oh, I didn't raise my hand yet.
Well, I knew you had your hand up while they were presenting.
I was doing this thing, processing.
Councilor Mann?
Yes, quick question. Joe, I threw you to one of the other gentlemen, thank you for your due diligence on responding to these questions and working on the project. I was under the impression that we got some bids in for demolition, obviously, it's not part of this estimate that you have here, but did they come in lower?
No, it is.
It's part of the 22-point?
It isn't.
It is in there now, because I didn't see it, okay.
And I think that's why it expires, when you say bids expire beginning May first, that's the one.
That's the one that expired.
Okay, so, and that's under the 22.8, it's within the 22.8?
Yes.
Okay. How did you manage to get it to 22.8 when we started out, we hadn't got any bids in?
Sure.
And last time we heard this, it was like 25-point something or other.
Exactly. And this is why the building committee wanted this to go to bid. We've been banging the drum, the bidding environment right now is excellent. Part of it is because of what's going on with the state, a lot of projects have been slowed down, bottlenecked, put on hold, contractors are hungry. The schedule that we had, even though we slid a month, we were still in a good window as the holidays end, contractors are looking to fill up their ledgers for the year. We knew that January, February, people were going to be bidding this, and we got great bid results, and this is what we were hoping for. And I think, you know, going back, you know, when this was 25 and change, you know, maybe that looked palatable. And now, that's an estimate, and I will say, in a year or two, if this is delayed, we cannot count on a great bidding environment. We came in 12% under the estimate. We cannot count on that moving forward, and so, I just, we wanted to take advantage of this great bidding environment.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, I mean, you know, that's one of the things, we don't know what the environment is, and you have been stressing that for a long time. But I want to go back to the comments that were made in the public comment question about the MBE participation and local participation. And what I do wonder here is how much of, you know, how much are we potentially getting lower bids because we are going to bigger firms that are not really using the local labor, local MBEs, you know, because they go outside? I mean, this is what we, you know, the comment was made, I think, earlier tonight by somebody about us giving money away for tax abatements, and one of the things we know is that when the town has given money, has provided tax abatements to companies like Niagara and World Class Distribution, they've brought their labor in from Louisiana, from other places like that. So, how much of that is, you know, how much of that could be related to the lower bids?
Well, I think Downs needs to address that question, and I know as they're going through the bids, they are reviewing.
Please pick up the mic, please.
Yeah, Downs is going to have to address that question, and just like they're still going through the bids, part of what they are going through is those MEB requirements to make sure that the people that have put in the bids are meeting what they need to do. Now, specific to the questions, they're going to have to, they know that they need to look into that and provide those numbers, and so, I think those answers will be forthcoming. We just don't have that information now.
Yeah, I have some other questions, I'll come back.
Councilor Marshall, Neil.
I have maybe three questions. One of them is, I didn't see BATV on that list as part of the actual building, is it in there?
Yeah, for the renovation or for the new project?
For the new project.
Yes, they're in there, they are there.
Okay, thank you for that. And what are the costs of moving all the supplies and everything, did you incorporate the costs? We've done a tour of that building, and there's a lot of stuff in different rooms and storage and so forth and so on, where are you going to put it, and what is the cost?
So, in the new building project, the processes, the existing building remains operational as is for the most part. Over the soccer fields, we build the new building. When that's ready, the occupants will move from their existing space into the new. In the, part of the owner's cost, there's an allowance for a move consultant contractor, so that will be part of the work that will, there will be a contractor brought on, an owner contractor, that will help facilitate moving furnitures, belonging, all that.
Okay, and my last question is, are there minority contractors who will be working on this project?
That is part of the requirement. Again, Downs will answer that question. As far as we know, they're aiming to exceed the requirements.
Can you hold your question? You'll be able to ask it, Councilman McCrery?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, everyone knows I served on the building committee, and when I served there, I resigned in November because I wanted a seat on council. And while I spent much of my time with the building committee before this position, I was a strong advocate in making sure we fulfill that 30% requirement of the cash value, not the work value, but the actual cash values of MBEs and WBEs and disadvantaged business, particularly Bloomfield residents who own the business. And I, you know, grilled Downs, and, you know, Downs said they hired one of the best consultants to work with them, Claudia Howard, who owns a business in Bloomfield, and that Downs was going to do an exceptional job in hiring minority businesses that live here in Bloomfield, preference was going to go to them. So, I'm kind of concerned now that I sit on this side of the table, that residents and minority contractors, some of the same folks who showed up to the meeting, and they were promised that, you know, we want to support minority contractors, we're going to exceed the goal, and they come here tonight, and I'm hearing potentially one, or we got to get answers. I'm very discouraged, and if this doesn't, I'm very, very discouraged, and I'm not happy right now. And I know you're saying that Downs and the consultant may have to give the numbers, but they hired outreach. I went back and I looked at the minutes from the building committee, they hired Claudia, and she said there was going to be some outreach, and then there was a list of minority contractors that were provided and emailed. We should kind of have a kind of focus on how many people got bids and got contracts, and if we don't know that, that should be to us like in a state of emergency, like tomorrow. I really want to know how many.
I know they're going through all that, and so, they are compiling that information.
Okay, my next question, because, you know, this project is very dear to my heart, and I would like to see it, it's no secret that I would like to see it get completed. I know there's been some talk over the last couple of weeks of, and I didn't see it in this presentation, of a project on Gabroad, a building on Gabroad and the functionality of that. I would have liked to see that as an option, do the building committee look into retrofit in that building and seeing if it works for this current project? There's a facility on Gabroad?
Yeah, Nancy Haynes, purchasing and risk manager for the town of Bloomfield. Several people did go and tour the building at Gabroad last week. I'm waiting for information back from the real estate agent before I provide the town manager with an assessment of what the people thought of it. Joe and Mark went along with some of the building department officials and Yvette Hupnow toward the building. So, we didn't include that because we're still waiting on information from the real estate agent.
Okay, okay. I think I have one more. Oh, yes, so this $22.8 million, I'm very happy to see that that number is gone down from the $25 million plus that we were seeing as an estimate. I have some concerns, I know he said the guaranteed, the gap is what you call it, it's going to continue, it's going to move. And I worry that contractors understand, because this has been a public project, they understand the number that we are faced with as a council, and that the bids are going to come in low, just so we can get the project moving forward. And then, after the work starts, then a whole bunch of change orders comes in, and then if that $22.8 million, then it comes back and they need another seven, eight, nine, maybe $2.3 million. Could we speak to whether that's going to be an issue? Because, you know, I just don't want to find ourselves in a position where other communities have found themselves in, i.e., not to point them out, Hartford in their stadium, they got one price, and then it was something different. I just want to make sure that we're being responsible and that we don't find ourselves in that position.
Councilman McCrery, one of the reasons that, if you recall, Downs was selected, among others, was the extremely consistent and the extremely low rate of change orders for all of their projects over the past 10 years. So, while there can be no guarantee that there will never be a change order, we feel that we will select, along with Downs will respect the guaranteed price, and that there will not be excessive change orders to drive up the cost over what the guaranteed maximum was. And if I may address another issue that you raised regarding minority contractors, again, Downs isn't here. However, there was a significant outreach, there was a tremendous turnout for several programs to solicit minority contractors to come and make bids. No contract has been let at this point, so no one has actually been hired. We will go over all of those bids with Downs. We will go over all of those bids with Downs, including the minority and women-owned businesses. And we will do everything that we can to include within minority and women-owned contracts or those that are local. Now, the council policy doesn't give any preference or any points or any advantage to local contractors. Perhaps that's something that the council will want to look into for future projects. It is a flat 30% for minority and women-owned businesses. This committee is committed to not only meeting that 30%, but exceeding that 30% and doing as much as reasonably possible with local contractors.
Madam Mayor, could I have a follow-up, please? So I really appreciate that answer, but, you know, when we say exceed the 30% of the actual, you know, the council, the town policy of 30% of minority, it gets a little tricky because contractors, big contractors, understand that our small local contractors, some of them may have issues with achieving and receiving bonding. And so what they do is, you know, from my experience working at the water utility and working in projects and hearing concerns from contractors is, they would go out to minority firm suppliers and they'll get their, they'll actually get their, meet their 30% because they're going to the supplier who may be an MBE and WBE. And they're not necessarily putting people to work. And what I get concerned about is the people who are going to work, and particularly residents of Bloomfield who are going to work on this project, they're not looking to buy a third house or fourth house. They're just looking to, you know, feed their families like the gentleman said, buy groceries, pay a bill, buy, you know, maybe fix the roof or do some deferred maintenance. So it's very important that we put, it's very important that we put, we keep our eye on this, this particular, this particular issue. And I, over the next couple of weeks, Madam Mayor, I'll be looking very, with a stern eye on this minority contractor piece because it's dear to my heart and these guys are hardworking. And it goes back to, I know I'm getting on a tangent, but this is, I'm passionate about this issue. It goes back to our town hall when I think the gentleman named Mr. Rallo said, you know, he's been living in Bloomfield for 30 years and haven't laid a brick. And, you know, when we were running on this, on this campaign, we said we were going to put people to work, particularly small local contractors. And so this, if we move forward with this, with this project, I would like to see that be the first step of us putting, living up to our promise and keeping our promise to the small local contractors because they're going to hire kids and people from this community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome.
So. I just have a follow-up question for Mr.
He's already saying that though.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Since you started, go ahead. Since you started, go ahead.
I'm going to keep it brief. I just have three things. So the square footage, where did we end up on the square footage of the, the new building?
Just over 56,000.
Okay. But originally, what, we did increase it, right? Because I thought it was like somewhere around 45,000, 46,000?
The Centerbrook study, which was, if you look at the report, they were in the 56,000 range to hit the, as far as, I don't know the whole history. My understanding is that there was an attempt to meet the 22.3. And so the referendum amount was 52,000 and change.
Okay.
The net program, which is the usable square footage of the program, was 40,000 square feet.
Okay.
And so the rest of that's like hallways and whatnot. Our building at 56,000 has the 40,000 square feet of program. It's just the 52,000 was not possible. And so we're at 56,000.
Okay. Because I think, I thought one of the things that we had also said, and maybe it was Councilor Merritt that asked for it, was to include as part of the, you know, part of the new scope, to include additional square footage.
That was addressed by Mark. They said the 5,000 square feet, which was the number that was put out, it, really, there was no necessary, yeah.
Okay. I get what you're saying. Okay. All right. Good. Well, that answers that question. My second question's around the alternates on that screen right there. So the 1.5 million, and if you already said this, I apologize, but what, what's included in that alternates, 1.5?
So that's the bid alternates that we went to bid with because we knew there were things that we could take out and potentially buy later, was the courtyard fit out. We still have the courtyard, but all the paved areas, the playscapes, all those features. There's a nice pergola trellis that's outside at the cafe. That's like a tack-on structure. That's an alternate.
Furniture, right? Isn't it furniture?
The furniture is part of that because they have all the furniture in the building. The desire is obviously to buy all new, but you could buy that down the road as well. There's two site items, one, both revolve around the fields. And these were late additions. There were requests, ones for irrigation of the playfields as an improvement. The other is for a better drainage, under drainage of the fields. And then there's around the back, the gym, changing the brick to a decorative block.
Okay. So is that in that report that Councilor Goff just?
No, because that's going to be part of what the committee needs to review in the coming weeks and make their final recommendation.
Okay. So that would have to be added on to the base price though, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that would then push us over.
If, if it's.
We're over by 500,000 and then we'd be over by another one and a half.
Or anywhere in between.
Or anywhere in between.
It's a, it's a Chinese.
But the alternates does not include any of the other features that were under number three on your.
Solar panels.
Like the generator, solar panels, swimming pool, doesn't include. Okay. Okay. That clarifies that. Last question I had was around the schedule. So unless Councilor Goff is planning to change the date, our finance subcommittee meeting occurs after April the 5th and after the town council meeting on April the 9th. So I'm not sure how that's going to play out. And I guess my concern is, I totally get the critical path and I understand it and I agree, but I'm not sure, again, in light of everything that's been, that we're trying to accomplish, is that sufficient enough time to review everything and get the input that we so desperately desire to get from the public? Where in there do I see, I don't see any town forums or any sort of town, you know, group of people coming together to hear all of this before it gets to the council. So I, you know, I totally get your schedule. I totally understand how critical it is to meet the dates, but at the same time, I don't want us to feel like, again, we're being rushed into making a decision before all of the inputs have been gathered. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. So I'll let Mr. Suggs if he, I think he wants to respond.
I certainly understand that council would need some time to reflect and absorb and get additional input and sentiment from the public and perhaps other professionals. I guess the point that the committee is attempting to make to you is that this April date is the lowest cost point on the curve. That's what we believe. Beyond that, we go up the cost curve for all of the reasons that were mentioned. And we just wanted you to keep that in mind as you deliberate your decision.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor. Everybody else.
Mr. Suggs, before, Chairman Suggs, before you go back to your seat, I just want to go back to the minority contractor participation. I know you guys are looking for us to commit to certain, you know, timeline. What sort of commitment will we get from this committee that we need that threshold as far as Downs committing to that 33% of minority participation in this project? What sort of stipulation would?
True minority.
Yeah, true minority participation. Because I work a contract and I've seen where minority can be classified as, you know, female or something of the sort. What kind of commitment? You guys are looking for commitment from us for timeline. What kind of commitment is this committee willing to, to reassure this council that the minority participation will be met?
Well, Deputy Mayor, I can assure you that I, and I think it's the strong consensus and sentiment of the committee, that we will definitely meet the 30% minority set aside as outlined in your policy. In fact, as I indicated, it is our goal to attempt to go well beyond that 30%. Now, again, the policy doesn't spell out, unfortunately, local contractors, contractors whose business is in another town, but their residence is in Bloomfield. It just says minority contractors. But we, we are willing to go through the list of contractors to see, particularly if there are bids that are very close to one another and one happens to be an out-of-state contractor and one is a local contractor, to see if we can make that work for local contractors. But in terms of being consistent with what now exists as the town policy, I'm extremely confident that we will meet and exceed that.
So, but based on the town policy, there's a loophole there where no one within this area, within this town can be a part of this process. It can come from out of town, per se.
According to the policy.
Yeah. And that defeats the whole purpose.
And that is, that is absolutely wonderful, Chairman Suggs, because what it says to the council is that we have to fix the policy. That's all it says to the council.
Which is what I suggested earlier.
So we are in talks with some people who understand what a true minority participation should look like, to be able to craft a proper policy that will benefit the minority contractors that live here in town. So that's all that, that's all that is highlighting to us, is that we have to make sure that the policy is changed and fixed.
Again, I think it's the sentiment, certainly is my sentiment, and I think it's shared by many on the committee, to do just that without the policy in place. We're going to do everything that we can possibly do.
Well, that's what I would hope, right? But I also know that there's certain things that are implied, right? And because it's not spelled out properly, you may not have that as a tool to guide. So we're going to need to make sure that it's spelled out properly going forward. But we do hope that the Building Committee will take into consideration the minority contractors that do live here in town. And as a past contractor myself, under the minority status, I do know how the game is played. I do know how general contractors find loopholes away to make the minority contractor status requirement. So I would really hope that we are being very diligent in what we're looking at and the, the outcome. So thank you very much, Mr. Suggs.
I just have a couple more questions that, that was, I just have a couple more follow-up questions. I want to get back to the soccer field because I'm going to beat this dead horse because it makes no sense to me to build a whole new soccer field and not have floodlights. I know I keep going back to the same problem where we're using those portable generators right now because my son plays soccer in the fall and it's not good because the exhaust and the, why are we not considering to include, especially when we're saying now that it's now 22.8? Why are we not including the floodlights? I'm not, I'm not willing to sign on to this if we can't simply include floodlights for our children. Once again, we're stepping over our kids. So please explain why we can't include that.
It certainly can be included.
And that's what I want to see.
It can be included under our current schedule.
Okay.
Cannot be included under our current budget. Would add about $800,000 to the project for that. So, and it's an item that can be accommodated at any time, not only within this project, but in the future. So it's really your call. If you, if you want to spend another $800,000 on this project now, then it can be done.
I hate to say this, we're spending 22.8 and that's a whole lot of money. So I don't think, well, 22. Yeah, exactly. So, so the point I'm trying.
I understand your point completely. And we've gone through many, many items like that. If we had included all of them, we wouldn't be at 22.8. So, you know, as a committee, we felt that was a logical item, you know, in working, I don't want to point a finger, but, you know, working with Dave Malesko, the importance of those lights, yes, we'd like to see them in the long run. Yes, the fields will accommodate them in the future, can be added at any time. And whether it should be in this project now or not is, is your decision, you know. But as a committee, we felt it was perfectly logical to draw the line before that, just as we drew it before.
What was the reason for that?
A generator.
What was the reason for drawing that line with the floodlights? Was the.
On advice, on advice from current usage? Am I?
From what current?
I'll let Dave.
Please explain that to me because.
We were just looking to duplicate the existing services for it. And that's, we were changing the program over because the program itself was for 330 Park Avenue, the building itself. And so since the field was being taken away, fields then needed to be added back in place for it. That's why, so it wasn't overlooked for it, it just wasn't part of the original building program. So we were just trying to meet the existing current, current status of the field. Would I love to have lights? Absolutely.
So do you think there's a need for the lights?
Absolutely.
So why don't we consider the lights?
Costs.
Very expensive to run.
This building overall is going to be very expensive to, to manage and operate. I mean, I.
I don't.
Yeah. That's the end of my comment, but I think you guys really need to consider adding the floodlights.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Marshall Neely.
I have a couple more questions. One with regard to Gabroad. You did make, someone made a statement that you were going to take a look at Gabroad, you know, a group of you were going to go and take a look at Gabroad. I'm asking, are you going to include council when you go to take a look at Gabroad?
We've actually already gone and toured Gabroad last week and we were going to report to the town manager and then from there, he can advise you on whether you think that it would be worth a visit for, to have council do it after receiving the information that staff pulled together.
With, with much respect, I, I say to you that I believe that the council should go in addition to the town manager, but on their own. We toured the human resources 330 park and I don't see any reason why we need to wait for the town manager in order to go to see Gabroad because I think we're all intellectual people and we could assess things as we walk through with you guys. And I, I just feel as though when you go and take a look at it again, maybe you should invite council.
The only thing that I would advise you, that it is a school and it's an operating school and it's difficult to arrange times to go through, but certainly I have the, the card of the, the real estate agent who can make arrangements for the council to do a tour if they're so interested.
Okay. And, and my, my next question is with regard to technology in the new building. I wanted to know whether or not the building is going to be fitted for technology, state of the art, I guess, or maybe a little lower than that. But is this building going to be the kind of building where, you know, it's fitted for the wifi in the building, it's fitted for, you know, other technological things that we do now, looking to the future so that we won't have to go back and do it again? Is that part of this project?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to reiterate what Councilor Marshall Neely said. I can underst, I'm perfectly willing to separate town staff from the council or building committees or anything else, but it does disturb me when I hear that, that town staff, some town staff went with people from the Building Committee. I realize we're looking at it for this project. We could also be looking at it for the library. There's also some talk about other projects. I think from the little bit I've seen, it looks like a marvelous, it, it looks like something the town should definitely be looking at regardless of what we use it for. But I would, I agree with Councilor Marshall Neely that we need to be brought into this process sooner rather than later because ultimately if we buy that building and that lot, it will be council funds that do it. But I, I would, I agree with Councilor Marshall Neely that we need to be brought into this process sooner rather than later, because ultimately if we buy that building and that lot, it will be council funds that, that do it. I'd like to make a couple of comments, and I don't, it's getting late, so I don't want to make, I don't want to take a lot of time.
What's that? That's a, that's an overstatement.
It is getting late, yes. I just want to make a couple of general comments about the presentation last week at the finance committee meeting and the shortened presentation tonight. And I want to predicate this of saying I do appreciate the work that the building committee, I know Mr. Weissman put in a lot of time on this, and everyone on the building committee, but I'm disappointed in the report, because as I read through it, I really feel that the, the point of the council, the point of the council's actions in considering these other options was, we have a building that, we have a project that was over cost and is still over cost, although it's getting better. It's still over cost. There have been lots of issues about it, and there have been, there was very little public input initially. We're trying to get public input, and I will make a comment in a minute, and then leave that for the mayor to talk about with respect to meetings and Councilor DiLorenzo's statement. But we're trying to get public input, and we're trying to think through these things that, in my opinion, should have been thought through well before any of this process started and well before any referendum even came anywhere near being on anyone's mind. That didn't happen, we are where we are. But I would like to note that some of the comments in the thing, for example, yes, I think it's important that when we build buildings or we make spaces, that they have shared spaces, that different populations use those spaces. But there's nothing magical about the populations that use them now, and some of these, these buildings, some of these spaces could be potentially shared with other spaces. There is a long section in here talking, that gives anecdotal comments or gives staff comments about the synergies of having quote "one stop shopping" of these three services in one place. And no one is going to disagree that that is the case, that, that that's certainly a, true for some people. But it does make, it makes no attempt to quantify that, it makes no attempt, I, I have no idea if that's 5% of the population that uses the building or 90%. I'm sure it's not 90, it's probably not 5 either. But if that's a reason for, for looking at that, then, or for, for coming up with the conception we have, then, you know, we need to quantify it, and we need to know what, what the alternatives are. Similarly, the, you know, the whole issue of the program as defined by what we have now, I think the council, as going through the budget process, is really learning the meaning of the term status quo. Because what we are seeing is a lot of things in this town have been run the same way for a long, long time. And that's not to say that those ways are wrong, but it does say that when any, ever anyone comes in, they should be examining things from a, you know, thinking outside the box or looking at a new point of view. So I find some of those things problematic. I'm glad you did the report. I think one thing to emphasize to everyone in the council, based, and this was, came out, this was talked about, finance committee meeting, I think there was misunderstanding between renovate, what renovate by, renovate like new would mean in relationship to what we ended up with. I think the original idea was we would be able to make some piecemeal changes to the building and then quote renovate by new. I realize there is also a renovate by new definition in the Centerbrook study, which does talk about moving walls around and all that. I think we're all agreed that the current renovate by new of, well, let's fix the building and then start tearing stuff down, makes no sense at all. And I think we're all in agreement with that. But I think that it is important to point out that the $24 million estimate or whatever for the deferred maintenance would essentially give us a new building, albeit one that probably is not designed properly if we started from scratch. So I think we should keep that in mind. Last thing I will, I will mention is that the, the, the Councilor DiLorenzo brought up the, the calendar. We are talking about the calendar, because we're trying to, we're trying to determine what needs, you know, what needs to be done to get public input and to get all this information out. So we are looking at whether we will have a special, special finance committee meeting on the 5th, whether we will have a general public meeting, whatever. So I just point that out, and I will, I will ultimately let the mayor address that.
Councilor McCleary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just sitting here and I'm wondering, you know, this is like a camera port, like alternative metrics of step option 1, 2, 3. But what I don't see is if we do nothing, right? If we don't do anything, what is the current condition of that facility? And we have to take in consideration, if we do none of this, what are we going to do with the people in the building? Where are they going to go? What's going to happen? Have you guys taken a look at that? Like, that's a, that's, that's something that we as a council should look at, because, you know, these numbers inflate and go up, down, and at some point we have to think about if we, because we're on a tight schedule, according to their schedule, we have to do something the week of April 10th, and if we decide not to do anything, that means that building stays in the same condition that it is in. I'm sure we're not putting any money in for maintenance, because the assumption is we're going to move forward with the new facility. And so I know this, you know, it's the same thing with, I know it's like apples and oranges, but it's like the first cathedral. I know we're sitting here looking at numbers, and we're sitting from a 50 foot, 50,000 foot view, and we're worried about the numbers, but we're not worried about the human people that's going to be affected by our decision. Just what first cathedral, you know, we look at the numbers, oh, we got to bring in more revenue, this is an area that we're not taxing, so let's tax them, but we're not looking at the impact that it's going to have on their services. So if we do nothing with this project, I need some type of reassurance that the people are going to be safe. I know I play basketball there every Sunday, and depending on the weather, if it snows and it starts melting, you can't play basketball, because there's buckets all over the facility. If it's raining, it's the same thing, it's in people's office. We toured the facility, we saw the imminent need, some facilities, the rooms that need to be occupied are cold, and the rooms that don't need to be occupied, that doesn't fit the, the conditions of the program are hot. You got windows from the 19, whatever, 70s, 60s. So I think we really, really, I know, we, we, the building committee has done a fantastic job from November, you know, the ball has kept, the bullseye has kept moving, but you kept going towards it, and you've done a good job, you've did some public, I'm happy you did some public surveying. What, my question is, what amount of people in the residents of Bloomfield have taken that survey? How many people took the survey?
600 something.
600?
Mostly Bloomfield.
And mostly Bloomfield?
Yes.
Any overwhelming statistics on move the forward project, move the project forward or stop was, do you, wasn't asked?
That was not asked.
Okay. I just, I want to know where we, we go if we do nothing with this building. If this council decides not to authorize moving forward, what happens? The bids go up, we know the bids go up, but what happens to the current facility?
Counselor, Counselor, was that a rhetorical question?
No, that's a, no! Honestly, you guys, that's not funny, because people lives are at risk. The, the safety of youth, of families, of seniors.
Right, but you, you just, you just laid out a whole list...
I know, I just want to know...
...of things that's wrong with the building. It's leaking, the windows have been there since the inception of time, the roof is bad, the walls are bad, everything's falling apart. There's no sprinklers, there's, you, you just, you just laid it out.
So that, so to me, it seems that we need to move forward, we need to move forward, because we understand the, the dynamics of the current building and where we are, and so, you know, I know we want to get more public influence, but I think we're against...
Actual numbers.
Say it again?
How about we wait till they actually present the actual numbers, when they have everything set in stone that this is what it's going to be?
But I don't think...
Then we can actually make a vote.
But I think my, I think my, my question is, is what happens if we decide not to go with any of the options?
People go home and the building crumbles. Counselor Mann? Counselor Mann?
Following, following the impassioned questions, I just have a simple question, maybe it's not that simple, but if I don't ask it now, I don't feel it's appropriate to ask it in April. How close is this building to being a Leeds building? When we're building in 20, 20, the year 2000, we should be aiming at the highest technological basis for building, one that will last longer, will be most efficient in operating conditions and so forth. And I know there are standards, and I don't know what we were aspiring to. How close are we, and what would be the difference between this and a kind of a Leeds constructed building?
Yeah, I mean... There was no charge to meet any standard. Really, the current codes, if, if you're familiar with Leeds, really the, the current codes are pretty much equal to Leeds Silver, which is the base, you know, the first tier. And most of that's just because the code requires the energy consumption requirements, the HVAC, to be of a certain standard, and so that meets that, pretty much meets the baseline standards. Obviously, without doing all the documentation, which is at that level, really that's where the cost is of documentation and the filing and whatnot. Obviously, there was the desire for solar, we've made the accommodation to have that in the future if so desired. But really, that was kind of as far as the charge went.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, CTEC Solar, our solar energy supplier in Bloomfield, is working on the, working under the project in Board of Education, and it, it's a zero cost to the board to build, put them on the roof. So if you got the roof ready, put them up there.
Put them up there. Deputy Mann?
Yeah, I just want to just make a few more comments. As a, as a parent of two kids who use the facility, there's no question that this facility is needed. That's not, I'm not up here questioning about whether or not we need a new facility. I know for a fact we need one. I know we may differ on, we shouldn't have done this, it should have been something else, it should have been the library, whatever the case is. That's beside the point, at this point, we need a new building. I'm more concerned about minority participation, okay, because I think that's important. We're talking about bringing jobs locally here in Bloomfield. We're talking about make sure our kids have a safe facility. I pretty much wouldn't send my kids anymore there in the summer for summer camp because of what I know now, behind the scenes. So we need to do something, we need to move forward, and I, I agree with that. There's no need for us to go back and forth. You know, there's no reason for the debate, just to make sure that we're doing this in an effective way, efficient, and it's not costing the taxpayers anymore than it should. So we need to find a way to move forward.
Well, let's get to it then.
Because I do not want to, I do not want to continue sitting here going over this debate over and over. I need the floodlights, I think that's important, because once again, I don't want us to short change our, our kids. But there's still a reason for this debate to go on and on. I'm tired.
Okay, so there's two, there's two questions in the, there's two questions in the audience, and I'd like to hear from the two questions that were in the audience. I did say that we would get to you, so please go ahead and ask your questions. Make your comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Jocelyn Chance, 544 Bloomfield Avenue. I remember when this project started out and the council started out, they pretty much ensured us that it was going to be 30% participation minority on this project, and that Bloomfield residents were going to be working on this project. Because, you know, I've been a contractor for over 30 years, living in this town, I've been in this town since 69, and I've never done a job in Bloomfield. And we were promised that there was going to be 30% participation. Now, is that 30% of the project value or workforce? What is it? What, what is it? Because really, you know, there's a big difference there. And if we, and, and as a contractor, I can tell you that yes, there might be contracts going out to minority people, but it's not going to be anybody from the town of Bloomfield. So in the future, I hope this council, whatever projects are coming up in Bloomfield, it'll be written...
Oh, yes.
...in the language that states straight up that 30% minority.
Resident.
In the language. So if a contractor or a project manager come in, you don't want to hear any excuses. It's in the language.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I can thank you for your force.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
When, because you know the inception of this project precedes us, so you said that you were guaranteed...
Well, we were, yes, because you know what? This, this outreach started before you guys were there.
Exactly, precedes us, so, so who made the guarantee?
Well, there were folks here that, that told us they were going to make sure the 30% is there. And from what I, from what I understand, the bids went out and they received bids, I guess there was only one minority contractor that got bid. So, well, that's why I'm here, you know, with the, there, you know. So I'm, I'm, I'm very disturbed about this, because, you know, like we said, we want to build this community, and we need to have our citizens partake in whatever is here, because the money actually do stay here.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much, that's all I have to say.
You're all set? Okay. So, very quick. Counselor McCleary, very quick.
So I just want to make a, a point of clarification, that the 30% is a town policy. It's a town policy that the council passed a couple of years ago. I think I have it in my email, because I had to fill, to send it over to me a couple of weeks ago, because I was, again, very passionate about this. But the policy says 30% of the cash value of any municipal funded project. So this is a municipal funded project, which tells us that if the 22 point, actually, of the construction costs needs to go to minority contractors...
So that's a 2006 policy, I believe? I don't believe it specifically stated that they had to be Bloomfield resident.
No, it doesn't state Bloomfield resident, yes.
So that's the language that I'm talking about, that needs to be a little bit more strengthened, a little bit more robust with that policy, because if we're not making a dis, if we're not distinguishing if they're Bloomfield residents or not, the policy still has loopholes.
Yes, ma'am, I, well, yes, Madam Mayor, I totally agree. But I would like for us to go a little further too, because that will then give them a loophole, they'll use just the, the vendors, the suppliers in Bloomfield.
No, no.
So if moving forward, if we create a task force to...
We don't need a task.
Or whatever, however we decide to do this, I would like to have some input on that policy.
The way the policy will be written, it will be strengthened and robust enough that we're going to get true minority participation residency requirement for our contractors in Bloomfield.
Thank you, I would like to participate in that process, if you don't mind. Thank you.
That's the mayor?
Yeah, I just want us to be very careful for us to go down this path, because if Hartford start doing the same thing, then minority contractors that are in Bloomfield are going to lose out on jobs. So we can't, just a second, I'm just saying, we cannot set a precedence where we start picking and choosing exactly, you know, we want Bloomfield residents alone, and then you have other towns start doing the same thing.
Hartford does it. Hartford does it.
Okay. I just said we got to be, Hartford does it.
Hartford does it. As a, as a minority contractor, I know that Hartford does it. So there's nothing that we're going to be doing for Bloomfield that no one else does. But I believe that, I believe that towns do it to make sure that the money stay within the town. So it's not like, we're not going to recreate the wheel, we're just going to make the wheel a little bit more robust for Bloomfield, okay? Thank you, Building Committee, we greatly appreciate you coming out and making the presentation. We thank you.
You must be tired of saying this, but not...
Oh, I wouldn't say that on TV. So I know that Councilwoman Goff and Councilwoman DiLorenzo talked about the timeline, right? The timeline seems a little tight, because we need to make sure that we get input. So I need for you all, I need for you all to figure that out, because as you know, we are in budgets, and in order for us to be able to get everything that we have to get done, in order for us to have some public input, that timeline is, I think, a little unrealistic. unrealistic. So I would like for you all to, you know, discuss it, you don't, we don't have to give a, a good, you know, feedback right now, I'm just saying, think about it and see how we can work it out together, because I, I don't know if that's gonna, realistically, I don't know if that's gonna work.
If, Madam Mayor, if you or the council as a body would have a suggestion of how we might proceed to expedite that decision point, given your schedule, we would not only appreciate it, I think we would do everything we could to accommodate it.
So if you give us, if you give us a day, we'll get back to you tomorrow, we'll try to come up with some things and see how it, how it will best work. If, we'll, we'll get back to you by tomorrow...
Okay.
...with some suggestions, some thoughts?
Again, I recognize that there does need to be a bit of reflection and further thought.
Yes.
But I also recognize that this is the lowest cost point. The cost point likely goes up after that point, likely does.
We're aware, so we will definitely... Nobody wants to go home.
The, these dates, April 5th and April 9th, I mean...